I think I'm gonna move forward anyways and call this meeting back to order at 6:31 PM. We were previously in executive session discussing negotiations with union personnel. So as I begin all the meetings, I'm gonna begin by saying pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that need gather in one place, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person meeting attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. So we should also start by just taking attendance, and so from the school committee side, I am obviously here. Rich McGowan is here, Diana Boutwell is here, Chris Bappasacilio is here, and I do see Janine Embriano here as well. So we are all here and accounted for.
Did Mike Conley make it back?
I do not seem like yet.
All right, because we both got sent to a diverted place, so I had to re-sign in a third time, so.
All right, I'll make sure Mike has the link.
Okay.
Okay. And we're gonna begin with public input, and Dr. Daley was... I did have somebody reach out that said they might have public comment, and I don't know if they've come, but I will pause for a moment to see if anybody has any public comment they would like to make. And I do not see any, so we will move forward. We're gonna begin by talking to getting our student report from a former student at this point, Ms. Bridget Gru.
Awesome. I am. Hi. Former student sounds really weird, so I was a little thrown by that one, sorry. I hope everyone's doing well. It's nice to see all of you, which hasn't happened for me in a while. It's lovely to see all of your faces. It's crazy that this is the last time I get to present to you after four years, so thank you for having me. So I'll, as usual, give some information about what's happening at the high school. So remote learning wrapped up on Friday, and it seemed like it was a great end to the school year between teachers and students. It seemed like there was some really productive work towards how to best utilize technology and how you can interact with your teachers, that you might not be in the same room, but there are still a lot of ways to have positive conversations and to learn in new ways, so that was excellent. There's been a lot happening for the seniors, which is really great, and due to the efforts of our excellent class officers and Mr. Lepretz and Mr. Hain and Dr. Daley, there's been clearly so much effort put into that, and I'm grateful, and I know the entire class is grateful. So we were able to receive our diplomas, our cords, and any scholarship information on June 9th and 10th, and O'Connor Studios was present for anyone that wanted pictures with their families, which was very fun as well. And thank you all for the gift. I received it then, and it was so thoughtful, so thank you so much. I really appreciate it. It was wonderful. We also had videos sent to us for the typical spring student recognition night, which recognizes academic achievements for students in all grade levels. So each video was sent to the parents and students of the entire class, and it was great to see everyone's accomplishments. It's a great way to see what people are really interested in and what they're passionate about, so it was great to be able to do that through some videos. And then on Saturday, there was the rolling rally for the seniors, which was so wonderful and such a great community event. I'm not sure who was able to be there. It was hard to keep track, but I know I saw Mr. Buckley, which was wonderful, and your family, and it was really great and such a fun event, and maybe should be added to the books for every year, but I might be pushing a little bit on that one. But it was really fun and a great time. And the banners in the center of town, I'm sure you've all had a chance to see, are wonderful, and it's been great to be a part of such a unique class, and the effort that's been put in by everyone is so appreciated. For the National Honor Society, juniors were inducted this year, and a video was sent out, so you're able to see everyone who's in there, which is a great accomplishment. And being a member, it's really a new way to hold yourself to different standards than you might on the average day, and so it's a great society to be a part of, and the North Reading chapter again has great participation. And then for the Seal of Bileiteracy, which is a statewide program, we had 12 students receive it this year. The languages were in Arabic, Spanish, French, Portuguese, and Greek, and we had seven students earn the Seal of Bileiteracy, and then five earn the Seal of Bileiteracy with distinction. So that's a great testament to the Foreign Language Department at the high school and what they're doing, and both participation in classes in school and second languages and first languages at home, which is excellent. And so overall, it's been a really great spring, a unique one, but one where I'm so proud to live in North Reading. I've lived here for 16 years, and I'm grateful all the time to live here, but especially at a time like this. So thank you so much. That's the end of my report, and thank you, thank you, as always.
Wonderful job, Bridget. Any comments from the public or committee members? I will begin and just say, Bridget, it's been a great joy to have you at meetings, to get to know you a little bit. I think that, you know, I mean, I think education is meant to, you know, be an offer that each student has to choose to accept, and I think you've gone above and beyond. You've given so much back. I think I will always remember you as, you know, Madam President of the MASCERS, but more than that, I mean, like, I mean, your role with the MASCERS is really indicative of who you are as a person. I just feel like you want to support other people, you want to let other people shine. You put a ton of work into MASCERS. You put a, I mean, I remember the Halloween thing, how well that went, and that must have been a huge task, and so, you know, I just want to thank you for your years of, you know, what you've contributed to the school, and you've really made it better for a lot of other students as well, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Lepretz, anything? Well, Bridget, just to say real quick, it's been such a pleasure to get to know you and watch you grow, and to see you in this role, and then just to have an opportunity to hopefully stay in touch and watch your future successes. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Lepretz.
And I just was gonna say, Bridget, that I will always have a soft spot in my heart for the theater folks, being one myself, and so I agree with everyone that it's been great to watch you come up through that program and be such a big part of it. So congratulations and good luck moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Bridget, myself, as Dr. Daley, I just want to say thank you for all that you've done here at these meetings. It's been fantastic, but I do feel like, you know, watching you with the theater, and then anytime we ran something in the pack and I needed someone there, you were pretty much the one that would volunteer to come in and to do. We did so many things over the years that you were just the backbone of getting the audio, the video for some performances, or meetings, or conferences, or professional development, and you've really developed such a great skill set there that I, you know, I hope that you're able to continue to do that for many, many years, because it's such a great skill set to have, and I think you're gonna continue to bring a lot of joy to a lot of people for many years. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
Oh, my goodness.
Wonderful. Well, we're gonna go about five hours tonight, so you're welcome to stay as long as you want.
That's my cue. Thank you all so much. I hope you have a wonderful summer, and thank you for just truly excellent years here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, we're gonna move on, and we're gonna begin with some more recognition. I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Daley so that we can recognize some of our retiring teachers and staff.
All right, I know that some of the folks are on the call, and if you are on here, you might be calling in on phone, or you may be calling in on video. If you're on here and you want to say hello when we speak about you, that's great. I'm just gonna share a little bit about the different people that are retiring this year. We have quite a number of teachers, paraprofessionals, food service, and then we have a few other positions as well that I wanted to speak to. So I'll start with our food service representatives, Lisa Martini and Rachel Zimmerman have both retired this year, and they have been fantastic. Lisa was with us for 12 years, and Rachel Zimmerman was with us for 22 and a half years. You're gonna see, I totaled everything up here today, and I think we had over 200 years of service among the people that are retiring. It's unbelievable, the amount of time that this group has put in, and many of them for more than, I think just about everyone, more than 10, and some for more than 20, some close to 30. So it's really pretty incredible and pretty amazing the service that they have here. Paraprofessionals that are retiring, Sandy Pathier, Linda Reynolds, Linda Welsh. Sandy, 21 years in the district, Linda, 13 years, and Linda Welsh, 28 years in the district, which is incredible. Susan Musacio is a teacher, computer technology robotics at the middle school. She's been with us for five years. Paul Larson, grade three teacher at the Hood School, has been with us for 23 years. Kathy Grant, kindergarten teacher at the Hood School, also 23 years. And Kathy Dasho, a digital learning special for the district, has been with us for 13 years. That's really some incredible years of service, and we're so happy and so proud of our folks here. I've also invited tonight our data specialist, Nan Cook, who's been with us and worked very closely with me, and now with Dan Downs. She does so much behind-the-scenes work, whether it's, you know, assisting computers with troubleshooting, or district reporting, or even fixing one-to-one Chromebooks. She really just does so much for us, and it's really incredible. And that's Nan Cook, and she's retiring in August. And the last person that, I hope he's on the call, I have so many things on my screen, I can't see everybody, but Wayne Hardiker, our supervisor building the grounds.
I'm here. I'm here, Patrick.
Excellent, Wayne. Glad that you're here. Thank you. Wayne has been with us for over 20 years, 21 years that I have here on my sheet, but Wayne has been the supervisor building the ground, and as you know, he's overseen all of our building projects, middle school, high school, little school, roof, bachelor school, so many different things that just, you know, when we talk about having a safe and supportive environment for our students, that really begins with just that, the operations of a safe school, a school that's healthy and functioning well for our students, and is clean and receptive to all of our needs for our staff and students. And so Wayne, just talk about behind the scenes, he epitomizes that, just being there early, staying late, getting things done, and he's really got, you know, like all of our retirees, such big shoes to fill. So I just wanted to recognize and thank all of those folks tonight, and I don't know if anybody wanted to say a few words about any of our retirees.
Yeah, I did. Let me see a couple of things myself here.
Wayne, please.
When I started here, when I started here, all the graduates in 2020 weren't even born. I mean, I guess I'm 21 years, but it's been unbelievable for me, really a job, a dream come true. I started in Wakefield. I applied for the job up here. It was, I don't know, several people applied for it. It's been rocket-fast, 21 years. I'm gonna thank Patrick Daley and Mike Conley and Dr. Bernard for direction, giving me a push, making it happen, providing the funds, you know, and making it happen. So I'm kind of a low-key guy. I don't say a lot. I kind of let the place speak for itself. We've got great schools, 18 great guys who work for me, and they stay here, so I've always said this is a great place to work. So thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other folks, any other retirees want to say anything, if you're there?
I just wanted to thank everyone for the, I loved working at the middle school with the students, and especially with the robotics, and I just really enjoyed, I'm gonna miss it so much, but it's just time for me to move on. Anyway, I just thank you, Kathy, and everybody in the district for supporting me and helping me to move forward in my career, because I learned a lot about robotics, and I hope the kids learned a lot, too.
I think they did. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a great opportunity. I couldn't have found a better school to end my career, and I really enjoyed it thoroughly.
Well, we wish you luck.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I said this to all of you, I'm sure this is not the way any of you thought you'd be going out, and it's a little bit different, and you know, the goodbyes are different, but we certainly want to celebrate you tonight, and I think you've all had some nice opportunities with your schools and with your students as well, but thank you so much, too. Anyone else want to speak? I saw Linda raise her hand, Linda Welsh.
Well, cheapest. I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Hood School. I've been there, I don't know, 50 years or something, and I've loved every minute of it. I've just, they've just become my family, and I feel sad leaving, but I think it's time as well. And Glenn, thank you so much for everything, the staff. Patrick, thank you for doing such a great job this year. I know it wasn't easy, for sure, but thank you all, and I'll miss you.
Thank you. I think that's the first time you've called me Patrick.
I know. I wasn't gonna say what I normally call you. I didn't want to be disrespectful.
She calls me P. Diddy, which I love.
No, it's Dr. P. Diddy.
Dr. P. Diddy. I do love that.
That's right.
That's what my students used to call me. It's great.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, Linda. Anyone else? Any of the other folks, you don't have to speak if you're a retiree, but if anyone wanted a moment to share?
Hi, Patrick.
I'll say something. I mean, when have I ever been at a loss for words? But I want to thank everybody that I've worked with. I want to thank you, Patrick. I want to thank Sean for being so welcoming and batch. I want to thank Kathy O'Connell for getting, you know, you were the first one, we started the robotic program sort of together at the middle school, and everybody's been a pleasure to work with. Chris over at Little. And thanks all so much. It's truly been a rewarding experience. That's it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Patrick, it's Chris. I wanted to just say congratulations to Kathy and to Nan, who I'm going to miss tremendously. I didn't want to talk, but she's been such a wonderful support system to Lisa and me, and I really can't imagine who was going to fill her shoes. She's been just, to us, a ray of sunshine, always there when we needed her, only a phone call away, willing to jump in headfirst no matter what. And so Nan, I'm gonna miss you so much. And to Wayne Hardiker, who, you know, pops into my office, you know, a few times a week. My secretary tries to stop him, but he gets around her. Great guy, you know. We don't always agree, but we agree to disagree, and we get the job done. I think he's got that kind of relationship with all the principals. I think we, you know, we work together, everybody works together well, and, you know, he's got kind of a funny personality. You can have a lot of laughs with him, but he crosses a tough guy, but he's really not. So Wayne, I'm gonna miss seeing you in the building. Thanks for all you did, especially during the roof project, which was a tremendous amount of work. I appreciate everything you've done, and especially keeping the guys, you know, going down the right path and getting the job done. What is it we say? Safe, warm?
Clean, safe, warm, and dry.
Yep, clean, safe, warm, and dry. Thank you.
Got it. You got it.
Yeah.
Nobody does what I do, Wayne.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, I was just gonna say a quick message to Wayne. I'm gonna miss you, and I, you know, really appreciate catching up with you when we have the chance to talk. And also, I'm gonna miss Nan so much, I think, as we all are, and I, you know, my little jokes, I gotta call, I got a Nan 1-1 issue, and I don't know what I'm gonna do now when I have to call Nan 1-1.
Yep.
But she is like a third arm, you know, and a second brain, you know, and I'm gonna miss her so much, but thank you. And thanks to everybody, Kathy and Linda, and all our retirees, Susan, for much.
And then, if I could just say, this is Michael Conley. I just wanted to offer my congratulations to all the retirees. I know, I wanted to know some of you, and I know you've worked so hard and so dedicated, and, you know, everyone cares so much about the students in North Reading. And, you know, Nan, I know you're gonna be with us a little while longer, but I'm certainly gonna miss you. I'll echo Principal Molly's thoughts. You're just, you know, you're always right there and so passionate with everything that you've, you know, you put your heart and soul into the job, and you're just extremely helpful, and you're so patient with everyone as you walk us through our issues. So I'm gonna definitely miss working with you, certainly wish you the best. And I do want to say a few words about Wayne. I've had the pleasure of working with Wayne pretty closely now for seven years, and I think we all know how passionate he is about the job, how much he cares about the job, how dedicated he is, and, you know, he just has, certainly has loved the community in North Reading, has loved working for North Reading. I know it's been a great deal of pride for him over the course of his long tenure here, for 21 years, and it's been a pleasure for me over the last seven years to just interact with him and work, you know, really hard to try to improve the services and the buildings and grounds, and we've definitely had a lot of, you know, just a lot of hard work. Went into a lot of projects, and he's put his heart and soul into everything, and I'm gonna certainly miss his daily pop-ins at about 7:00 AM to, you know, what's on the hot list, as he says it, what's hot, what's on the hot list. So I'll miss going over that list with him each and every day, and I wish him and his family well. I know he has some grandkids that are coming, and he's been enjoying, so I hope he spends more time with his family. I know that he will, and I miss him well. I wish him well, and I'm definitely gonna miss working with him.
I see, not to put you on the spot, but Kathy Grant, I see you there. I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything, or you're good, but Kathy, I just want to thank you for your years of services as a teacher and also as a leader in the NREA. I think we've worked so well together over the years to support our teachers and our staff, and thank you for all your years of service with Dan's staff as well.
Thank you, Patrick. I wanted to thank everyone, too, and particularly you, for stepping up to an incredible plate this year, and you did so well. We've had so many interactions with so many dedicated, wonderful people. I can't thank you all enough, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I think one of my proudest moments was when I was invited back to Boston College, where I had received my first degree, and they asked me on behalf of North Reading to instruct them as to how our students were so successful in winning the Massachusetts Science Poetry Awards, which my kindergarten class, can you believe it, won in 1997, so that's way, way back. And I was more than proud to say, yes, I represent the North Reading Public Schools. And like I said, they invited me back a number of times to share our way of showing science through poetry with many. So I've really been a proud member of the North Reading Public Schools in many capacities, and I thank you all for just a wonderful, wonderful way of working with families and their children. It's been an honor and a privilege. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, Patrick, I was gonna say, on behalf of the school committee, I want to thank everybody. This might be the first time somebody's leaving, and Jerry Venezi won't blame it on me, but I really do appreciate, I mean, unfortunately, my kids didn't get to meet so many of the middle and high schoolers, but, you know, I mean, I know when Patrick says 200 years of service from just a few people here, it's amazing. I mean, it's the reason that so many parents, you know, moved to this town. It's the reason I moved to this town. It's because of the teachers and the school system here, and so, I mean, I just want to thank everybody, even if I haven't gotten to meet you. And Wayne, like, I don't even go to the school that much, and I feel like every time I'm there, I see you, and so it's just gonna, I don't know, I have a feeling you're gonna be somebody that just keeps his pass and just walks around the school every once in a while, but, you know, you've been just a bright spot when I'm at the school, just to see you. You're, I don't know, I mean, there's, I personally, just in any job, you see people that really like what they do, and they care about it, and they just want to talk about what their job is. I mean, Wayne, I think you are just, you know, the example of that, you know, you just, you can tell how much you love what you do and, you know, the people there, and so just thank you for all your years here.
Thanks very much.
And I wrote a few words about folks in my article for the paper this week, too, so thank you all for your service. I really appreciate it, and you should be very, very proud of the work you've done, because we are of you. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much to everybody, and, yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we gotta find some gifts and send them to you guys afterwards as well when we do that.
Those folks should have received a few things. If you did not yet, they will be coming. Typically, we would present them in person, but it's a little bit different this year, obviously, so some may have something, some may be getting something.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to slide out of order tonight. I wanted to start with, you know, the many people that were here. We did put on the short agenda, which isn't on the longer agenda, so I did want to ask Dr. Daley before we go to the school improvement plans, just in case there's people that are tuning in. I thought Dr. Daley did an excellent job, you know, this week hosting the first meeting of the Racial Justice Committee. There was a lot of attendance there. I think there was a number of people that are in this meeting that were there. Many of the school committee members made it, many of the principals made it, many teachers made it, and so, you know, I think that's something that was on the top of the agenda, and so I'd like to, you know, if Dr. Daley, if you can just maybe say a few words about that, just in case people are tuning in for that.
Sure, absolutely. No, we had a very important conversation, and, you know, we very quickly received about over 150 people that were interested in joining the conversation. We had over 100, I believe, in the meeting itself, and the community members were fantastic, the teachers, the administrators, but I have to say, the students and some of the former students that spoke just absolutely blew my mind with how passionately and personally they spoke, told their stories, and gave us feedback, but also really gave us some room for improvement. I think that's really the lesson from that meeting and from this whole experience is, you know, obviously, we're doing some things well, but there's a lot of things that we need to improve upon, and what are those things, and how can we look at those things and think about them differently? So some things around curriculum, some things around employment, some things around goals that we have as a district to move forward and to try to, to try to make, you know, honestly, this world a better place, and this community a better place that's more representative of our mission and values. And so, you know, some of the teachers were very passionate and shared very personal stories and have since reached out to me to be involved in work that we move going forward. I had one teacher who has tied this into some work that she's doing, and kind of really analyzed the conversation and gave me a great breakdown that I think could be the framework for our next steps as far as goals and action steps. And so I think there's some real positive next steps for us to do with our group, and I've had several conversations with teachers and with parents, you know, about some next steps, so I'm very excited. So I'm not sure if there's any questions or others that were a part of it that want to weigh in.
Patrick, Dr. Daley, I'll weigh in and just, I will echo, or apologize for the bell in the background there, but I just echo what Mr. Buckley said. It was very well-run. I have to say, I was really impressed with everybody on the call. It went more smoothly from a technological standpoint than many daily calls I'm on at work, so I thought that worked really well. People were very responsive, but no, I think in terms of the content, it was great, and I agree that the students and past students really, you know, brought a great perspective. I think one of the challenges with work like this is hearing and getting fresh eyes and hearing from fresh voices, and so I think it was great to have all those voices on the call and to hear them all. So congratulations. Thanks for getting it started, but I think it's a good process to begin with.
I'll just, Dr. Daley, I'll just jump in again and just say, you know, I thought it was great that the administrators, I thought it was great. There were so many teachers that were there that I thought were very eloquent, and some of the students, you know, I mean, Samantha Galvin, I thought was, you know, very well-spoken. I think Shivi, you know, Shri Kamth is, you know, is very great. I mean, she's been, you know, writing some material that's been out there on the, you know, that's been shared on some of the community pages, and so, again, I mean, I don't know exactly where it goes, and I think, you know, curriculum is obviously not something that, you know, I can really comment much on, but I thought it was, you know, if you hear 150 people registered for a topic that is this charge, emotionally charged right now, I thought people were very respectful. I thought they- thought people were very respectful. I thought they, you know, I thought the framework from the beginning was good and it was good to hear different ideas. And so, um, no, I thought it was very well run. And so I appreciate the time that everybody put into it. And as, as Rich said, I mean, I think it's a start and, you know, we'll, uh, see what comes of it. Any other comments or questions from anybody?
This is partly to see if my microphone is working.
No, it's not. Okay. Okay. So moving on, and I'm going to make the principals make, wait just one more time here. I apologize. But on the agenda we had at the end, buried at the end, the announcement of another assistant superintendent. And I, I really think that, you know, since some of the topics, you know, some of the questions may be about that and about transitions, um, I want to kind of turn it over to Dr. Daley in a second here, but just say that I know that, uh, you know, Dan Downs isn't here tonight, but I mean, I think Mr. Clean and, uh, Mrs. O'Connell are two of the most impressive people I've ever met that, you know, we are so fortunate to have here. I, I, I hear so many times people can't find a good principal, can't find a good superintendent, can't find, you know, good administrators at all. And we are just, you know, we are overly blessed in this district to have such amazing people that are, uh, you know, wanting to apply for things. And so I just thank, thank all three, you know, candidates for stepping up. But I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Daley to, to talk about the assistant superintendent role first.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. So, yeah, as I, as Mr. Buckley mentioned, our, our three finalists for the position, Dr. Downs, Dr. O'Connell, Mr. Clean, were outstanding. The interviews were, were incredible. Um, I've spoken to each of them individually because I think the process itself, and I spoke to them about this throughout, I think the process itself is, is a growth and learning experience. I think going through the interviews, thinking about the questions, getting all of your, your answers prepared and even, you know, your letters of recommendation and your resume. And, you know, just thinking about the job in a different way, I think is an important step. And in, in many different ways, I could see working with each one of these candidates, um, as being a, an incredibly rewarding experience. And I hope, I hope that somehow we're able to, to, to work all together for, forever, um, in these roles. But I do know realistically that I'm also, and I say this to them, I can't hold people back either. And I, I totally understand that there's, um, many opportunities out there. And I'm going to continue to work with all of our, all of our principals and all of our administrators in any areas of growth that I can possibly help with, with my experience. I think as a team, there's things we can all learn from each other because, um, I, I think this, this administrative staff is going to be doing great things all around, um, all around the, the Commonwealth as far as education, because there's so much to share with everyone. So I, I'm really excited to share with you tonight that I have had conversations with everyone. But, um, but Doc, uh, Mr. Clean is the person that, that I've selected to be the next assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, to work with us. And I would like to just thank, uh, Sean for, for that. And I really look forward to the, to the time we're going to have together in this new role. So thank you to everyone that interviewed, applied and was a part of the process. And congratulations to Sean.
Thank you, Dr. Daley. Um, I just want to quickly thank everybody who, I've been very fortunate. It was funny listening to the retirees, um, and how long they've been here. And I'm like, wow, that's a really long time. And then I'm like, wait, they weren't here when I started here. And then I just was doing the math after that. I'm like, wow, um, North Reading has, has always been a very special place in my heart from my first teaching position at the Hood School, uh, 20 years at the Bachelor School as principal. Um, and it's just amazing family to me over there. Um, but this opportunity to challenge myself both professionally and personally, I'm very excited about. And one of the greatest comforts I found was in thinking about making this change was working with the administrators I worked so hardly with every single year. Um, we take on challenges and work together and come up with great solutions for our students and our schools. So I'm very excited, um, about this next chapter and the work that we have to do this summer to get ready for next year. So thank you very much.
So as a part of the decision process, I did speak with Mr. Clean about the transition and what that would look like. Um, as important a position as the assistant superintendent is, I feel that in the situation we're in, I think the reopening of our schools and having some stability there, um, is, is key. And so I'm very happy that our, our principals are in place as we open our buildings for the fall. Um, we won't make the transition from bachelor to principal to assistant superintendent until December 1st. Uh, but I did want to name the person now so that we can begin to work on the transition over the summer, hire for a new, um, principal at the Bachelor School and talk about, um, all of the different possibilities for, for candidates. So I'm, I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Clean and the folks at the Bachelor School on, um, you know, you talk about big shoes to fill. When you have a principal that's been there 20 years, that's going to be quite a conversation to have. And I'm very, very excited about some candidates that, that I'm aware of, um, that, that can also be a part of this conversation moving forward. So I'm very excited about, about next steps, but I'm also excited that we have some stability for the fall. I think that's a, a good decision for our district.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, any committee, committee members have any thoughts or comments? And I would just say, congratulations, Mr. Clean. Very much, uh, appreciate your years of service and look forward to working with you for many more years. But just wanted to move that up because I think some of the questions we have is going to be on the school improvement plans on how that transition happens. And so I wanted to get that out there first. So moving forward with the school improvement plans, I think since we do have everybody at one night tonight, I think what might make the most sense would be to group the three elementary's, uh, improvement plans sort of back to back to back and then the, and the middle and the high school in whichever order, whether, whether it's elementary then, then middle and high school, just so that we can comment. Cause I have a feeling for, especially for elementary, that some of the comments will be just across all three schools. And so I'm going to turn it over to, you know, maybe Dr. Daley to introduce and coordinate this.
Sure. If you don't mind, Chris, I just had yours ready to go as the first, um, of the evening. That's okay with you. Ms. Molly would start. And then, um, Mr. Queen and Mr., uh, Dr. McKay, would you like me to do the slides? Or do you want to take the screen over?
Patrick, we did one presentation, so we're all in the same presentation.
Perfect. So, okay. So I've got it up on the screen and then, um, you folks can just let me know once you advance the slides, okay?
Perfect. And I'm going to start, Dr. Daley.
Okay, great.
So, so first off, we'd like to, you know, just say thank you for all of the support of the central office as well as the school committee over the past year. It certainly has been challenging. And I really, if you look at this front cover slide of our mutual agreed upon school improvement plan format, it's, we're all in this together. And I really felt like, you know, as, as we've said, that we've worked really well as a cohesive team. And it makes sense that we do this together. Over my 12 years here, we've really worked to synthesize our school improvement plans and line them up. So they look very similar because we are virtually working on the same goals as we want all of our students to have those same experiences across the three elementary schools. Obviously, each one of us has our unique little school culture and a little twist on it. But at the base core of everything, everything is a similar experience for all of our students. And we're quite proud of the work that we've done together to achieve that. Next slide. So I'd like to just start off with, um, a little thank you. So school council members spend a lot of time listening and, and asking really great questions. So I just want to recognize my school council members, my, my school nurse, Mrs. Blanchett, she was our faculty representative, Mrs. Reasonberg, who was our community representative, she's a former parent, um, Ms. Leanne Mahoney, she's a BCBA and a faculty representative. And I also have Mrs. Catarano, who came in halfway through the year to replace a school council member who had moved. And Mrs. Burnham, who has been amazing this year and very supportive, um, throughout the discussions we had relative to the school improvement plan. Always like to start off too with a nice picture of something memorable as we transition into our highlights. Um, each year, um, our student council, so our student leaders in fifth grade participate in our Toys for Tots drive along with the North Reading Fire Department. So there's a nice little snapshot of our students, um, delivering some toys that were brought into the school by the whole school. Um, and we fill up that fire engine and send them on their way to, to, to help others around. So really nice memorable moment there for the Hood School. Um, if you want to advance the slide, Dr. Daley, that'd be great. Again, we're, we're blessed here in North Reading. We have great staff, great faculty, and our, our achievements and state mandated assessments i- is so great. And we're just so proud to continue to achieve at a high level this year. Our accountability percentile ranking was a 95. Um, and we, we, we celebrate that. This year, and if any of you have been around for the planning of a parent association auction, everyone knows how much effort goes into that. So I want to number one, thank my, my parents association, um, for all their dedication in the planning and execution of that. It's also important to note that I had two new parents association presidents come in halfway through the school year as, um, we had, and the president had moved out of state. Um, so I'd like to just thank Cindy Solomon and Jen Burnham for jumping in, taking it on, particularly in a very challenging year around an auction. Um, and one of the first things that they really wanted to do was donate technology and improve technology for the Hood School. So this year they donated 25 iPads. Um, and we, we're set to deploy those upon, um, our exit of the building. So we'll get to use those right off the bat next year. And we're very excited. We continue to work on our UDL implementation. You'll continue to hear about that as a theme across the three elementary schools this year. Again, one of our, our major goals for the school is to continue to have our school-wide meetings, um, basically to ensure that all of the students and staff are really super focused on what our main expectations are for students behaviorally and, and with their work ethic and all those sorts of things. So we have our safe, responsible and respectful meetings. We had four of them. Um, the first one is a nice welcome one where we orient all the students that might be new to the school. And we really focus on that, that perseverance, that don't give up attitude during those. So we really like to, to have that similar response and similar language that all teachers and students share around our expectations. Um, this year, as a result of a data point two years ago, we really continued to focus on math. We felt that we had a really strong literacy focus at the Hood School. And at some times that math needed to be brought into a, a greater light. Um, so we've continued that. We've mathatized the school. Basically, we've put math language around the school. We put math facts on our, on our, our stairs going up from the hallway. And we really want to focus on math fluency. And that was something that we, math fact fluency, and that's something that we spent a lot of time on this year. Um, community engagement is big for us at the Hood School. We really celebrate our STEAM night, um, specifically the work of Mrs. Cleary, our fifth grade teacher, but our science, um, specialist. She's done a wonderful job and we continue forward with our, our STEAM night. Um, we added a clear interactive touchboard to our library. Um, starting to shift away from that smart board technology and just to really, you know, see what other options are out there. So this was a great addition to the Hood School Library. It arrived prior to our, our departure. So we did have some experiences with it and the students really seemed to, to love it. And then the numerous touchpoints that it has for two students to interact on one device. And then, um, our fire alarm system was updated in accordance with fire regulations and code. So that was very exciting to, to watch that work done over the summer and to be, you know, uh, make sure that we're up to code. And specifically, I want to thank Mr. Hardaker for his work on that as well.
Great. Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, Chris. Chris Molly's up next.
Hi, everybody. How are you? Um, so I'd like to start out by thanking my school council members for this past year. Linda Emery and Katie Gabriello were parent representatives. And Kerry Fleck was a teacher representative along with Kate Reed. Um, and we're still searching for a community rep. So next year, if you know anybody that in the community that's willing, um, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I've been unsuccessful for two years in a row trying to find a community rep. So if anybody has an idea, send them my way. Uh, next slide, Patrick. So highlights from 2019, 2020. Um, it was a short year, but you know, it started out in a very positive way. Um, the little school had a lot to celebrate. It seems like it was a thousand years ago. Um, we were recognized, as you know, as 2019 National Blue Ribbon School. We were also recognized as a school of recognition in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, our accountability percentile was 89% with 83% of students meeting or exceeding targets. Um, this year, um, the K to, K to two educators in my building, along with special ed and the reading specialists, participated in, um, Department of Education, uh, early literacy screener pilot program. It was a grant that was provided. And we were introduced to a new screening tool called iStation, which we used throughout the school year to do progress monitoring and, um, and assessments throughout the year. Um, we, I, I, I think by September, Patrick, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, most districts in Massachusetts will be choosing a screener, an early literacy screener. So, um, the three elementary principals will be speaking about what the results of that pilot were and how we felt about that program in order to go forward and choose a screener, um, for the next school year. Um, we're continuing our work in social emotional learning at the little school and our PBIS, which we began to roll out at the beginning of the year. It was very successful with the children really enjoying the ticket system that we had in place. We're also continuing our focus on universal design for learning with our faculty. We're proud to say that we were the turkey trot winners for the seventh consecutive year, although I haven't seen the trophy yet. I think it's lost someplace in the COVID, um, you know, tunnel somewhere. Um, the little school PTO was generous enough to, uh, purchase 30 new Chromebooks for our classrooms. So we were very appreciative of that. They're always so interested in doing what they can to provide, um, you know, to make our program stronger. So we couldn't be, uh, more thankful. And I send out a big shout out to the PTO for all they do. I know they were disappointed that many of their year-end events were canceled this year. Um, but they are busy planning for next year and hope, hopefully they'll have an opportunity to have some of those events. Um, earlier in the year, I finally was able to install a new projector and screen system in the cafeteria. And I was so looking forward to the school committee visiting this year so that I could use that new screen and new projector. But of course, that was another, another event that was canceled due to the COVID pandemic. So I'm, I'm looking forward to having you at the building so that I can actually utilize that new equipment. And it's quite impressive and we're very excited about it. And just like the Hood School, we were able to update our fire alarm system in accordance with the fire regulations and code. And that's it for the highlights for the little school.
Good evening. Uh, just looking at the Bachelor School, uh, summary, I want to thank our school council members. We had a first year Kate Aronese, uh, whose first year was cut a little short. I was like, that wasn't a typical year for, for school council members. But, um, we were excited to welcome her too. Tina Borick has been a faculty rep for a few terms now and serves as the co-chair. Sarah Harrington is a parent representative. Marian Lait is our community representative. She's a North Reading resident and a retired teacher at the Bachelor School. And Sandra O'Connell serves as our faculty rep. Um, one of our highlights this year included the Never Too Young to Be a Science, um, Citizen Scientist, which was published in the National Science Teaching Association. Um, I think it was the October or September edition, um, of a project our kindergartners do with the help of a parent volunteer, uh, Mary Hatton, who we recognized, I think two years ago as a, with a school committee award for the work that she's done with bringing science to the elementary school students. Go to the next page. Uh, highlights from this past school year, uh, similar to our colleagues, you, you, you realize that the elementary schools in town continue to, uh, perform very well and our students are learning at a high rate. Um, the Bachelor School was recognized, um, by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for High Achievement and Exceeding Targets. Um, and all of the data put together with the other factors put us in the 99th percentile for accountability. In grades three to five in all three content areas, ELA math and science, our average was 85% of met or exceeded expectations, which allows us to spend a lot of time looking at the students that are falling just a little bit short, be able to figure out how to help them, um, make the growth that they need to hit the targets. Uh, we continue to be very proud of the work that we do in-house with our professional development. Um, this year, similar to the other schools, we focused on, uh, universal design for learning and, and the social emotional learning in the classroom, which are both district goals as well. So we took, um, we were able to take that overarching goal and then bring it down to the school level a little bit more, increase the buy-in, the conversations and bring it right to our students. Um, so I'm very excited. So I'm very excited. The teachers get in, they lead different groups, offer different opportunities to get into classrooms, to see each other teach and provide feedback, which has been very powerful. And similar to the other two schools, our parent organizations can continue to be super generous, and that goes from our our families donating the money or participating in the fundraisers, or whatever it is to be able to enhance student enrichment. This year, we we were able to, right before it actually happened, once the school closed, we installed two water bottle filling stations, which is a very expensive undertaking, but it's complete. They're ready to go. However, we may be able to use them in the future. But it might be PO leadership. And and our our parents continue to be super supportive of the school and always prepared to help wherever we might need a little extra funds to to make sure our students are successful. You can go ahead, Patrick. When we were working on our school improvement plan, knowing that we were coming together, and it was, we really took a focus to try to condense it all together and stay with some of our common themes. For teaching and learning, we, with the MCAS data absent, we're really going to focus on the iReady data that we have available for us to create, to learn from our new baselines and guide our instructional practice to monitor student growth. In addition, we will work collaboratively to reopen the schools and provide an environment prepared to meet the needs of all students. Management and operations are going to provide a safe learning environment for all children. The focus will include identifying the plans to reopen school in September. For family and community engagement, where educating children is a community effort involving parents as well as community resources, provide a continual reinforcement of academic and social ideals embraced by the schools and community and professional culture to implement our philosophy of working together as a learning community to foster a high-performance climate focused on learning. This summer, and preparing for this school year will be like nothing that any of us have ever experienced before. So the work that we do together, K to twelve, but at the elementary level will be super important. Next slide. So as as I mentioned, we're going to really focus on the iReady data, which is something that we've used in the background at the elementary schools, actually K to K to eight for math and three to five in literacy. And really try to use that data from some of the historical goals that we've had to create a starting point to look at what student learning could look like. So we're going to look at the baseline percent. Eighty percent of our students will score honor above grade level, which is tier one. Fifteen percent of students will score one grade level or below, which is tier two. And five percent will score two or more grade levels below, which is tier three. And that's for ELA and math. But one thing I think at the elementary level that we've learned is that iReady is a decent predictor for MCAS performance. And the diagnostic test in the fall is challenging. So the and it's on the grade level that the students are in. So you'll get data that says your students aren't quite ready, and then that's where you get to see a lot of that growth by the end of the year. So we think once we're able to take the entry data compared to what we've got in the past couple of years for entry data, we'll know where our students stand now after remote learning and a summer vacation and be able to kind of work with that data to kind of move ourselves along for the school year. You can go to the next slide, please. That's just the visual data that we will be included in all of our school improvement plans, that you'll be able to see the numbers and what our goals are. So it just gives you a little visual representation of what we're trying to achieve. Next slide. To do that, in using the data, we're going to establish that new baseline. iReady is one set of data. We're always super careful, just like we are with MCAS, to use other common assessments that our our faculty and staff are familiar with to help us with our planning. Take that data and really try to remap and look at our scope and sequence to to revise the expectations and whatever information or updates we get from the states about standards that will help us continue to provide interventions to support student learning and measure progress. And then using the Title One Math Instruction in the schools that is available for grades three to five to to help us with any of the students that might be struggling with that. Next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Clean. So I I'm up for management and operations. So the goal is always to provide a safe learning environment for all children. We believe that a healthy, safe school environment environment in all schools provides optimal learning environment. To that end, student support services and the strong infrastructure for plant maintenance must be in place. Facilities must be able to accommodate the needs of teaching and learning. Next slide, please. So obviously, I think our number one focus area is we continue to to discuss next year and the and and how we're reopening is to continue to collaborate across the three schools and have discussions on what best practices. So that's at the front forefront of what our thoughts are as we go into next school year. We continue to collaborate and work together to make budgetary decisions that align with the district vision and the mission and the goals. We would like to continue into year two of the Social Emotional Learning Committee. Across the schools, we have many members that participate that are participatory in pause, and that's used to address the social issues and the social emotional learning. And we really like to focus and have some nice discussions relative to best practices around schedule implementation and the maximum being able to maximize the use of time. Our time is is very precious and you know, we really want to make sure that we implement best practices and strategies to maximize that in accordance with all the contractual obligations that we have. And again, just to continue the implementation of UDL or Universal Design for Learning, expand it beyond what we currently do. Obviously, we have we have UDL coaches in each school, providing faculty support, but I think it's like next level with peer observations, discussions and breakout groups to talk about what is seen in the classroom as a best practice and what can improve student learning for all of our learners.
Sorry, that's back to me. There's four standards, so we have to rock, paper, scissors to see who gets the second one. So Chris will be last. For family and community engagement, obviously, we have a very involved parent community. But we like to use our resources and lean on them as well for reinforcement of academic and social ideals embraced by the schools and community for both the learning and growth and the growth of all students and the success of all staff. We do that using our school councils, our parent associations, school committee meetings. Any way we can get people more involved and get feedback from them. That's what we're hoping to do to have a successful school year next year. Next slide, please. In doing that, simpler, you know, with the work that we have to do to engage and get feedback from our families and our students in the community to safely reopen schools in September is going to be important to learn from what we just experienced in the past trimester and be able to use that to to be able to do the best that we can in September. If whatever were the expectations are, or how they change to what a typical next grade year would be, meaning that we were short, you know, even with remote learning, how much did we lose? How are we going to get that all into whatever that next school year might be? We want to be able to make sure that we can clearly communicate and articulate those learning expectations to to families and collaborate them to support learning both at home and at school. And then always, you know, we reap the benefits of what the parents contribute back to the school. So encourage parent involvement in committees and events at school to support student learning and the operations of the school. Next slide.
And I have professional culture. So the goal is to implement our philosophy of working together as a learning community to foster a high-performance climate focused on student learning. And the objective is professional school cultures demonstrate a commitment to high standards that foster high performance and demonstration of student learning. This includes the implementation of best practices and increased focus on student learning data, building a supportive environment and motivating students and adults to be continuous learners. Next slide, Patrick. Thanks. So our focus areas will be to continue to work with our leadership team to improve collaboration, communication, peer review of student work and analysis of data amongst the faculty and the staff. And to continue to offer professional development. For example, faculty study groups, book studies, teacher leader, trainer model, the continuation and the expansion of universal design for learning, including peer observations with feedback. And where we've discussed the potential for a survey and, you know, regarding remote learning, which we just completed, and the ability to analyze that survey data. So when and if it's available, we can use that to plan our reentry for September. And finally, to monitor and measure the effectiveness of all of our academic interventions. Next slide, Patrick. And that completes the elementary school improvement plan presentation. We'd like to thank you all again for your support throughout the year. It was a complicated year, but it was less complicated because we knew we had the support from the school committee and senior administration. So we and 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 for the most part, all of the parents were very appreciative. So thank you all for your support. And any questions?
Thank you very much. And so maybe I'll go around just to the different committee members and give everybody opportunity if they want to ask a question. I'll start with Mr. McGowan, who usually brings something.
Thanks, Mr. Buckley, and thank you all. First of all, I just want to say that I really like this sort of team approach to to this. I know that we've always grouped grouped the presentation of the plans with the elementary schools coming in together, but I I like this this concept of all of you presenting together and working and 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 setting goals together, which I think is a really a good way to approach it. And I I guess my only question, and you did touch on it, is, you know, what are your expectations or how are you thinking the process of of sort of figuring out where learners are when they come back to school and where, you know, and how to move forward them? How do you think that's going to go? And and and, you know, what are your thoughts in that at this very early stage of that process?
No, actually, and I know Sean, Chris and I have talked a lot about that. I think that's a that's a great question. And we've had some pretty long discussions around what does regression look like over this time? And what does recruitment look like? And I think that was one of the like major reasons why we selected that iReady data as a data point. So now we just have to figure out what we're going to do based on, I believe it was K, so it would be one and two for for literacy would be the only data points that we really have to like collaborate on across because we could use iReady for the others. And that's basically why we selected that data point for our goal. It's definitely a great question, something we thought about. We actually talked about, you know, giving some assessments online to try to see what would happen. So we could, you know, have like a test group, a pilot group to see what that regression could potentially look like, or even if there isn't any, we're not sure. So we've we've had some interesting discussions around data and how to collect it. And I'm sure that now that we've got some time to really process the experience, that we can sit and have those discussions as a as a unit. Any other thoughts, Mr. McGowan?
No, thanks. I'll give others.
Okay, and this is Embriano.
Is my mic working? So it's not working?
It is.
Oh, yay. All right. My question was probably to you, Ms. Molly. What's the difference between iStation and iReady? You had said that you were like a pilot program for it.
Yes, they're very similar, actually. They're two very separate companies. They're not made, they're not done by the same company. And but a lot of it, you know, is very similar. A lot of the reports that you can get the the iStation is actually I think they have K to K to eight, might even go K to twelve. But for our purposes, the screener was only, the pilot program was only for K to two students. So we were only focusing on that for K to two. We don't use iReady in K to two for ELA. We start that at grades three through five. Because, you know, a lot of kindergarteners and first graders, they're really not reading at that time. And and even with the iStation program, we found that it was very complicated for kindergartners and first graders to take these assessments, especially early in the year on Chromebooks and on iPads, because most of the time spent was trying to get the kids to use the technology and not really assessing what they, how they were, you know, learning to read or what, you know, their phonics, their ability to sound words out and stuff like that. It was it was more of a focus on using the technology. So that was a little bit problematic. It got better as the year went on, but in the beginning it was a little bit tough. So very similar programs, but two different companies, very similar names. And and iStation is, I think, I've never seen iReady at the at the K to K one and two level, so I can't really compare, but I have seen iStation, so. Question, Janine?
She's back on mute, so I think that means she's done. Mr. Papa Vasilio?
Is my mic working? Okay.
Yes.
Yes. You know, I don't have any questions that popped up really. I was I was thinking along the same lines as Mr. McGowan and and I appreciated your answer. I appreciate, I like the the collective approach. It was, I haven't seen that good of a team approach in a in a team presentation in any of the classes I've taught lately. So well done. And I'm looking forward to next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only question that surfaced for me, it's always an area that I'm interested in, is I was curious with, you know, the the students coming back and given the pandemic, do you feel like there'll be any tweaking or any step back that you'll look at with your social and emotional learning programs? Will they change at all? Will they adapt at all? Or do you feel like it will still just be the standard plan and approach that you have for this coming year?
I think the districts were set were set well with the work that we're doing with social emotional learning as a district goal. And I think once we know what that school year will look like, we'll be able to to kind of readdress what our entry will be like, and that will have a very heavy focus on the social emotional transition back for all students, faculty and staff. And that will be a lot of work that we'll have to take time to keep a pulse on that for the transition back into school.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, and I I have a million questions, but I won't ask all of them. Most of them are about coming back, which I know nobody can answer yet. But I do have, I do have a few questions I wanted to start with. First, one of my students, one of my kids' teachers kept the Google Classroom open for the summer and encouraged kids to talk on there. And I'm just wondering if any other teachers have done that too, because I know my son, you know, who has that really liked that opportunity because you know, from a social emotional perspective, even over the summer, kids are still really isolating a little bit. And so I'm just wondering if other teachers have done that as well, because only one of my three kids I think had the Google Classroom open for the summer, but I actually thought it was a really good idea. Where and and today, one of the students already posted it, and other students are already responding.
Hi, Scott. That I honestly, I didn't even know that one of the Google Classrooms was open for the summer. So that's actually kind of a nice idea. I wish I had known that because that would have been something I would have shared with the rest of the faculty. I don't I don't know that that's been widely advertised, but
Yeah, Mrs. Mrs. Polcari kept it open. And I know, I know, especially for the fifth graders that are going to middle school. And there's a lot of anxiety and everything else. But one of the one of the fifth graders, you know, kind of posted this morning, and some of the classmates have done that. And so I know school's already closed, but even if that was a possibility where, you know, I just thought that was very nice. And you know, my son was really excited about it. And so that might be something that, you know, even if, I don't know if it's too late at this point in time, but I thought it was a really interesting way. And if it's available, I I think it'd be a nice way to allow kids to still interact over the summer.
I didn't know if Dr. Rake was going to, I think one of the hard things with that is the management and the monitoring of it. So obviously, Mrs. Polcari is still taking responsibility of that and doing that. So as as far as it being a professional expectation to manage that over the summer, there's a little risk reward involved. But I do, I do think that like some of my kindergarten teachers like had class tag or something else that they left open to to try to do that vehicle. So it is nice, very nice of her to do that. And I'm sure that she is managing that, knowing Catherine very well.
Yes.
And I I am aware of one at the hood school that that has contemplated doing that. We still, we're still early in those discussions, though. But I like the idea.
Okay. Second question, so I I could ask this funny, but I'll Second question, so I, I could ask this funny, but I'll try to be straight down the middle here. Like, so we see the pyramid, the eighty fifteen five. But we also saw in the, in the, in the, in the, uh, presentation about how schools are doing. I think the little school said eighty-eight percent are meeting or exceeding expectations. Eighty-five percent of the batch are, I don't remember where the hood was. I mean, I would assume that if you're meeting or exceeding expectations, you're probably grade level already. So, you know, why, why isn't it ninety-five, five instead of eighty fifteen, five? Go ahead, Glenn, I'll give you first.
I'll let you go because I kind of think we're going to answer it the same way.
It's, well, there's two things. One, we looked at the historical data. And so we find the iReady, some of the iReady assessment stuff to actually be a little bit. If you get below grade level, on the higher end of that spectrum, usually on the end of the year, you align to meeting expectations of the state assessment. So that number is different for that set of data compared to state assessment data. And also the, the beginning of the year where they go because they're tasting, testing on the grade level. It's that number, that pyramid's almost inverted at the beginning of the year. And it shows the growth from where you are and where you need to go. So did we probably take about five percent off of what that was usually with knowing that we were closed for three to make it reasonable? And something that we really wanted to be careful of not putting something up too high and, and falling short? Yeah, I think we were usually about that eighty-five, you know, ten, five, like that. We kind of get it down to that. But we wanted to be really careful and thoughtful about that for this year.
And for us, a little bit too, it's, it's really like how we use that data to provide instruction to meet kids where they need to. So that, that tier and that, that triangle looks very different at the beginning of a school year. And that enables us to kind of tier kids into that triangle and then provide them the appropriate instruction they need to advance to the higher tier. So it, it, it's kind of like that, our internal working language on, on designing instruction for students. So it, it's beneficial in that sense too. That's the end goal. So it takes a process to get there.
And the third question, again, for coming back, I'm going to be very limited in, in what I ask about because I know there's so much that is, can't be said yet, but, um, or known yet. But the three schools, it seemed like the batch is very different from a spatial perspective than a little or in the hood. Do you think that there's going to be big challenges in bringing students back between the different schools? Because I feel like just from a spatial standpoint, the little and the hood are probably so much, and I don't know the exact dimensions here, but I would assume the little and the hood have a lot less square footage. Obviously, the batch has a lot more students. But do you think that there's going to be anything that's going to have to be different? You know, with the batch versus the other two schools from a spatial perspective?
Well, I know that, I, I know that we've talked a little bit about that one too. I think it's another good question. But I think that when we look at coming back and we hear some of the, the speculation and those kind of things is it's all about spacing between students. And, and I think that the classroom space is the key to that. And I don't necessarily see a difference. And I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clean or Mrs. Molly, but like our classrooms, when I'm in your classrooms in your school, I feel like it's very similar in size, not, so it's not the overall square footage. It's the square, it's the space within those classrooms that becomes our lens to really look at and discuss. And I, I mean, if anything, I feel like the batch might have a little bit bigger size, but not a significant. And when you're talking about six foot and a six foot radius on people, you're talking like one or two kids and those kind of things. So I think that the challenges are going to be very similar for the three of us. And we're going to have some really good like learning opportunities and discussions around it to make that experience similar for all of our students.
Okay, thank you very much. And so again, I'll just end with questions there, but I just wanted to thank you. I mean, I know this year, year has been very challenging for everybody. I think, you know, most parents were, were team players. I know that, I, I know of a few that weren't team players. And so I, I know it's been challenging for, for everybody. But I, I know it's been a very, a very difficult year. But I just, I appreciate the leadership of, of all three of you. And, you know, wish you all the best for next year. I don't think, um, and, and any of us would really want to be in that position. And so I, I, I wish you all the best for that. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Middle and high school, I think, is up now. And I don't know if you guys are, you want to just do back to back or just one after the other, Dr. Daley or?
Back similar to, uh, to the elementary. Should be showing now.
Yep. Thank you. I, I just, before I started, do want to just echo what everyone has said. I feel, um, I always say this each year, but this year in particular, I feel very fortunate to work in such a supportive and live in such a supportive community. And I, I just want to publicly thank my staff for persevering through these last three months. I think we did an amazing job and our students were right there with us up until June twenty-second. And, or June nineteenth, some of them, I saw some of them today dropping off textbooks. But also to our parents who became teachers overnight. And I, you know, I just, I think our, we have a pretty special community. So thank you to the school committee for your support and to Patrick and, um, the administrative team for all working together through this. My, uh, school council group was an excellent group this year. We had two teacher representatives, Laura Oliveto, a special education teacher at the middle school, Jean Walsh, a reading teacher at the middle school. Our two community representatives, I've had, I've been fortunate to have Amy Luckowitz with me for several years now as a community representative. And then a past parent, Sandy Garnis, who's no longer a middle school parent sadly, but she stayed on as a community representative. And then a new parent to the middle school, who I think is doing double duty as a school council member at the little school and also at the middle school, Linda Emery. It was great to work with her for the first time this year. And Marissa Morello, a parent of an eighth grade student moving on, um, next year, leaving us. So I appreciate the work that this group did, particularly toward the end, um, when we were trying to finalize the plan. We had many virtual meetings like these. One of the hardest things was getting the electronic signature, sadly, a technical problem. But next slide, please, Patrick. Highlights just from this year, um, big, big highlight is being on the, um, being able to offer computer science and world language in grade six. So I was so excited. And again, thank you to the, to the committee for supporting that, um, expansion. I think both of those content areas are hugely important to us achieving our mission for our students and our vision for our students. So we are, uh, fortunate to be able to provide computer science and world language in grade six this year and then expanding into grade seven in the fall. So again, thank you and very proud that we were able to do that this year. Another technical change this year was all, all being on the same master schedule. So in my nine years as principal, this was the first year where there were not three different schedules for the three different grades. And it was certainly more manageable from an operational perspective. But, uh, beyond that, it was much more conducive to sharing staff, to brainstorming around special ed programming. And I think we're even making some enhancements, not to the schedule, but to special ed programming that would not have been allowed with our previous schedule coming up at this fall. So I, I'm, I'm very grateful to be on the same schedule. Of course, we don't know what it will look like in the fall, but, um, to have the same master schedule was great this year. We've continued with our weekly intervention blocks. We call them MTSS, multi-tiered system of support for students who are not performing at grade level in math, reading or executive functioning and study skills. I'd like to just focus on executive functioning for a moment. That's a, a skill that is developing for nearly all adolescent children. And it's something that we work on throughout their time at the middle school. But I found remote learning to be particularly challenging for our younger students. Looking at, you know, just, just anecdotal feedback and talking to, I've talked to a lot of parents over the last three months. I've actually talked to a lot of students and certainly a lot of staff members. And our, our sixth graders in general struggled more from the executive functioning perspective of managing the online learning and the multiple Google Classrooms. And so that's just something that we want to consider as we, as we approach next year, not knowing exactly what it might look like, just bearing in mind that even though our children, you know, they, they did a great job these last three months. I think there's some fine tuning and some areas that we could certainly improve upon. But, but we will hopefully be able to continue our weekly intervention blocks. We also piloted at the middle school, uh, in the winter. And, and because of COVID, we're not able to fully implement a, a new student data management tool. Patrick had brought in an outside consultant to work with the, um, uh, administrative council to show some work that he had been doing with Google Data Studios. It's a, um, a data management platform that he's been working on with a bunch of other districts. And we were lucky enough to be able to have him create something for the middle school that, uh, something that I've, I've wanted for a long time. I'm very interested in data, quantitative and qualitative. But this is a, a quantitative data management tool where it takes all of the data around a student and puts it in one spot for you. So it's very visual. It, um, can tell you the student's MCAS scores. It can tell you the student's attendance. It can tell you the student's current, uh, quarterly grades, their iReady scores. Just really almost anything that you can think of, you can see where the student is performing. And it's something that we hope to be able to use in the fall for, um, a way to identify students in need of interventions. So it's, it's something that, um, at another time, would be excited. I was hoping to be able to show you a little bit of that at your middle school, um, school committee evening that was to be held in March, and we were not able to do that. But at some point this coming school year, it would be great to, to show you the, uh, this tool that we are, um, building out. It's pretty incredible. We've also been continuing with our PBIS framework. That's the positive behavior, um, framework where we emphasize with the students what we expect from them in terms of their behavior. And we acknowledge exemplary behavior and reward exemplary behavior. As the three elementary schools mentioned, we are continuing with our universal design for learning rollout in year two. We had a great team of teachers, twenty-something teachers who met monthly, who shared work, who, um, observed each other, who read, um, studied a book together, two different books actually, around universal design for learning. And I think that, again, just to connect back to remote learning, universal design for learning can also be extremely helpful when planning for remote learning lessons because it's, it's, it's a framework that an educator considers when developing a lesson to allow for multiple entry points for all students from, you know, all learning styles and just ensuring that there is an opportunity for all students to feel successful. And I think particularly with remote learning, um, the UDL lens can be helpful. And then just, you know, our arts program is, is amazing. And we had a, a pretty wonderful Veterans Day assembly and winter concert. Our annual, uh, geography bee this year and our musical Rock of Ages led by musical director Carla Lister. I'm so pleased that we were able to get that in before COVID. And our legacy day, we did have, we did hold a virtual legacy day for our eighth graders, the other class of twenty twenty. I know we have fifth graders too, but, um, our, our students moving on to high school. For some of them, they are saying goodbye to the district as they go elsewhere. A small percentage go elsewhere for high schools. So it was really nice on, uh, Thursday of last week for us to be able to honor them and have a, a very special virtual legacy day. Those are just some highlights from this year. Thank you, Patrick. I always create the school improvement plan based on NRPS twenty twenty-one, so around those, um, three big rocks. So teaching and learning, like the elementary schools, I also used iReady for my, for my math and ELA goals. Without having MCAS, um, iReady was the next best thing. So students will, um, you know, be taking that assessment in September. We'll be able to hopefully not see a lot of regression, but we'll be able to immediately see exactly where we are, where each of our students are with reading as well as math, and then identify students right away who are in need of interventions. And our goal is that by June of twenty twenty-one, at least eighty percent of students will be, uh, at their or above their growth target number. So what iReady does is when the student takes the assessment, it tells you where their growth should be by June. And that's all adaptive and individualized. So we will chart that number and we will know that that's at a minimum where that student should end up by June. Um, and we'll capture data again in January, um, using iReady and then again in June. But we will primarily use it at the beginning of the year just to get a baseline for where we are. And, um, at, at a minimum, hope that students reach that, that, um, growth target number. Science is something that I have historically included also in the teaching and learning in my school improvement plans as a, as a goal, an academic goal. And there is not currently that I'm aware of an iReady for science. I'm sure that, that they are, uh, working on that if, if they don't already have it. But our district does not use, uh, iReady for science. So we will use our local common assessment data. So right away, again, early on in September, students will take a pretty comprehensive common assessment standards-based at each grade level for science. We'll chart that data. We will, um, progress monitor throughout the year with the intent that all students, at a minimum, will, will, um, you know, eighty percent of all students in each grade level will meet their, um, the benchmark of showing mastery of the grade level standard, science standards. So those are the academic goals under the teaching and learning, um, big rock. Technology integration, I think it's, it, it would be remiss of us not to, uh, focus a little bit on remote learning in our school improvement plans. I do believe that, you know, I'm a very optimistic and positive person, but there's a, a real possibility of some component of remote learning, uh, next year. So I do think that it is an opportunity, and it has already happened, for our teachers to hone their ability to integrate technology in meaningful ways and not just, you know, replacing, uh, you know, a pen and paper task with a digital task, but really being thoughtful about what opportunities are, are available to us with technology, especially during remote learning times. So that's an important goal for us and something that we will continue to work on. I would like to just take a, just a quick second to just acknowledge publicly our tech department. I said earlier that I feel very fortunate, you know, to have the support from the committee and from the administrative council. But without our tech department, but led by, uh, Dr. Downs, we would not have been as successful as we were with remote learning. And their team just pushed out constantly webinar after webinar after webinar on really excellent, um, uh, uh, technology, um, apps and, and, and ways that teachers could integrate. In addition, and I'm sure you may know this, but they also push things out for parents. You know, many parents said, Google Classroom, what is that? What, what? And they pushed out, uh, webinars for parents to access so that parents could learn what Google Classroom is and all about. So just a big public thank you to the tech team. I've mentioned, uh, also in my highlights from this past year that I'd like to continue the use of the student data management tool. I'd like to continue to build that tool. Um, a lot of districts in our area are working with this consultant. And I think it's something that will make us at the middle school more efficient with our data analysis and better able to identify students who are in need of interventions. And, um, it's something that I hope that our data team can begin to look at weekly. And, um, really, again, when we have the opportunity, I would love to just take a, a little bit of time to show you the, the, the tool. It's, it's pretty impressive. And I think, um, the next big rock is student support services. We will continue with our weekly interventions. And, um, by using that student data management tool, hope to improve the infect, effectiveness of our weekly interventions. For those of you that are, are not aware, we run those, um, for about ten weeks. And then we reassess and we determine whether the child still needs that intervention. Maybe they need a different intervention. Perhaps they don't need an intervention at all, which would be a great success at that point. And we also, uh, provide enrichments during that time. So it is a, a system we've been using for many years now. And we feel that it is, um, it is quite successful at helping kids close the gap and get, um, right up to grade level where we all want them to be, grade level and beyond. The next goal is something that I'm, I'm really super excited about. Again, has to do with data. We have, uh, a lot of students in the middle school self-refer themselves to our guidance counselors, which is fantastic. That's great. But we want to start capturing the reasons why they are self-referring. So you can imagine there's a myriad of reasons for an adolescent to, uh, need to go to guidance. But, um, we, we want to be able to identify, uh, wa, patterns. Why are kids self-referring? Uh, are they, um, anxious about homework? Are they struggling with a peer issue? Are they anxious perhaps about COVID? Are they anxious perhaps about COVID-19? Are they feeling that, you know, they're not academically not doing as well as their parents maybe want them to be doing? Or maybe it's just a technical scheduling issue that that they need help with. But by tracking just the reasons why students are refer self-referring to themselves to guidance, we want to be able to, as a department and a school, be better able to be proactive to meet the needs of our students. So if we see, you know, ten kids in a week self-refer themselves because of, let's just say, a massive social studies project, then, you know, that's a conversation with the social studies department. And perhaps, you know, we can work out a way that that project can be broken down into smaller chunks or spaced out over the, you know, the span of two weeks instead of a week. But that's just one, a very small, tiny example of the ability to collect this data, we think, will help us really be better at preparing our social emotional learning lessons, the care day lessons that we run. We think that when we know what's on kids' minds, we'll be better able to proactively prepare, you know, a lesson for the whole school to benefit from. And additionally, I think that kids sometimes show up at guidance not at the best time. The guidance counselors are in meetings. The guidance counselors are working with another student. And then there's a lot of downtime. And in schools, you want kids in front of their teachers. You want them learning. You want them feeling good, but but being, you know, in the classroom as much as possible. So phase two of this data self-referral tool would be not not immediately next year, but down the road would be to have a link on our website where they could they could fill out this quick form to ask their guidance counselor for a meeting. And that way, they're not leaving their class for twenty minutes to go find the guidance counselor who's not available and they're missing class time. The guidance counselor can read the the Google form and say, oh, okay, I'm going to go get so and so from, you know, lunchtime or a time when it would be less distracting from them to be taken out of class. So we're we're excited about that tool, something that our guidance counselors have been working on. And what it would look like is when a student initially showed up at guidance, there would be an iPad, and they would just kind of like you do at a doctor's appointment. They would click on why they are there, what the reason is. And then the last goal is something that I've had historically for many years, something that I continue to think is incredibly valuable is to monitor climate. I think it would be will be even more imperative that we keep our you know, our attention focused on climate from the student perspective and from the staff perspective. Typically, we've assessed climate at the middle school in the summer, like, you know, in June. I think that we definitely, with Patrick's permission as a district or as individual schools, need to start assessing that right away at the beginning of school, perhaps even before school starts, just to kind of know where everybody is and what's on their mind. And then I would like to see us measure it either quarterly or at the, you know, the January mark, just to just to see where we are and to make adjustments as needed rather than wait a full cycle before we realize there were, you know, certain patterns and themes that were bothering folks. So that's something that I would like to continue to focus quite a bit on in terms of the middle school climate. I think I think that's it for the middle school.
Thank you very much. And I think we'll just move on to the high school, and then we'll have questions after.
Sure. That's a that's that sounds fine. Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, great, thank you. Well, I would like to begin, you know, like the colleagues that I share this work before me, and just thank everybody for the, you know, unbelievable culture of a team mentality that we all share. And that's, you know, across the administrative team. And, you know, it's so clearly, I think, seen when we do have opportunity to share with the school committee and their support and the work that we do as teachers and the work that we do as administrators. So thank you for that. So again, we've many, many have said before me, the, you know, the unique end of the school year that we had. But the the school council group that we share this important work with, and what I what I think is such a special component of our school council, the high school, is that it's very student-heavy. And the feedback from students that I think that we've seen, you know, on many occasions, and as, you know, as fantastic as as Bridget Gru has been and, you know, I mean, that's that's kind of the, I don't want to say the norm, but there's a lot of student feedback and a lot of student input and a lot of student participation and student voice at the high school. And it's very evident in our school council. We have our listed council members here on the first slide. So I'll just let you peruse that for a minute. But again, we're going to miss Lizzie Barrett. We're going to miss Alexis Jones, Jen and Olive, who has been fantastic. So we'll have some holes to fill, but there's it's it's a it was a great group this year. The next slide, please, Patrick. So the highlights that I am going to be sharing for this nineteen twenty school year will be, you know, kind of designed to to focus on the well-roundedness that we try to achieve at the high school, the social emotional growth of students at the high school, the certainly the academic pursuits and the extracurricular pursuits that student has students have at the high school. So I'm hoping we're going to get a kind of a big picture with a number of examples and highlights of things that happened this year and how we try to build culture, how we maintain the positive culture that we're blessed to have, how we keep keep teachers engaged and learning. So you'll you'll see bits and pieces of anything from all these different. We've talked about, you know, educating the whole student in the past. So some of those very, you know, are relevant themes will be evident here. So to start first, our one-to-one initiative was across the entire grade level, nine through twelve this year. And boy, how important was that, that we got that accelerated? And again, as Kathy had mentioned, the importance of the tech team in getting students connected as we switch to an entirely remote end of the school year. Teachers remained engaged in our UDL coaching model, our personalized learning goals and program continued there through the freshman advisory program. The support that we had from the Parents Association in our student enrichment program with our, there's a type of that Ed Garrity presentation was grade nine specific, but then Jesse Funk for all students. And then we had Katie Greer come back and talk. Many people are familiar with Katie, and she presented to the students as well as to the parents on the same evening. And, you know, Katie Katie's return to North Reading was a component of, I think, recognizing that there was a need to remind students around internet safety and to refresh, you know, their minds on some of the practices that are, you know, encouraged and some of the dangers that that we can come across if we're not careful digital citizens. Other highlights, again, around student growth and the connectivity between students, freshman advisory program, plan mentors. Again, continued training in stress reduction through our counseling, guidance counselors and counseling department. If I can just stop there for a minute, I think that'd be it might it might be a nice time for a transition back to how we did in remote learning. Considering kind of what's on this screen covers a lot of that with respect to the everyone having a Chromebook and how do we stay connected? And what happens when kids are stressed out or not being connected during remote learning? So I I think I I'm very comfortable saying and sharing that, while we had some some difficult moments, that our experience with remote learning compared to other communities that I've that I've been in touch with and administrators was was remarkable. We had a high level of engagement. The feedback that I was getting from teachers was that, in fact, yes, most students, if not all, were connected, were engaged. When we did have students that we were struggling or or they were particularly struggling with staying engaged, staying connected, our support staff, either through the special ed department or again through our counseling department, was so communicative and extremely informative with respect to reporting back and, you know, calling and emailing, connecting and and just, I think, again, really providing that support that was needed to keep students engaged and to keep it as productive time while, you know, while we all experiment with a pretty dramatic remote learning model. So my hat's off to to members of those departments. And as we transition to the next slide, this is another piece of that, you know, things that we're able to accomplish and keep, you know, keep as a as a good example of the well-roundedness of the students at the school. We had some amazing athletic accomplishments this year, even though even kind of culminating with what seemed like we who who knew what the next day was going to bring but the that D-North Champion Girls Basketball Team playing at the Garden on March eleventh. And we had a New England champion in Billy Lord in the fifty-five meter hurdles. We had league titles in cheering and in football. We had a another league title in the girls hockey team. We had the Cape Ann League meet champs in boys indoor track and wrestling, which is on the next slide. We, again, received the Highland Trophy, which is calculated in our part of the Cape Ann League through participation, participation GPA and winning percentage. And we've won the Highland Trophy five of the last six years. And I I'm so proud, again, of, you know, what that trophy stands for, how it's calculated, and how we're we've been able to be so successful in, you know, kind of really having a a pretty good grasp, a pretty good grip on that trophy. That's been that's been, I think, something that that we all can take some pride in. Some additional data points, and I'll get to some more data in a bit. But our AP program remains strong. Our placement of eleven percent of scheduled seats is a student in a in an AP class. And when I say a scheduled seat, that means essentially it's counting every possible opportunity for a student to take an AP class. So I might take two APs or three APs. I'm going to get counted three times. So that is that is down a little bit. It was thirteen percent the previous year. But again, our AP program is one that is, it is restriction-free with respect to meeting. As long as you've met the prereqs to be in the course, there's no obstacle to keep you out of that course. We do try to be as informative as we can about what the AP rigor is going to present to students in that class. And I think our students have embraced that, and and they respond accordingly. Our student council remains strong another year as being identified as a council of excellence. And one of our own rising seniors, Nelson Ordell, is now the incoming president for our NEMASK chapter. And NEMASK is the New England and Massachusetts Association of School Councils. Some more highlights for nineteen twenty. As Bridget mentioned, we had twelve graduates in the second year of the Seal of Literacy. That was, we had seven in the class of twenty nineteen, we're up to twelve. Again, kind of coinciding with the with the timing of things as the girls basketball team was preparing against the against to play in the garden. We had our students with the in the drama, the imaginary invalid, getting ready to perform that following Saturday. Unfortunately, that did not happen. But prior to them in the quarterfinals being recognized and moving on to the to the semis, which we had scheduled to host here on that following Saturday, you can see the winners here, Sam Junta and Jen and Olive and Bridget Gru for the Stage Manager Manager Award. Not a surprise to anybody that she would, you know, be winning that award again. We had DECA Awards. DECA is a is a relatively new club on campus. That's kind of the transition from the Future Business Leaders of America. And Clara and Morgan and Rebecca went into Boston and competed from being recipients of previous awards at a previous DECA competition. Our Lunch with the Scientists program remains extremely popular. It's funny, we still call it Lunch with the Scientists, but it has branched out. And again, I think it's another reminder of the philosophy and the mindset that our students have on campus is their interest in certain things that to drawn to learn more about certain professions, learn more about certain topics. And that's why that that program has evolved as it has. So the next slide, the next slide brings us to some other data points. And I learned in the past, if you would go to the next slide, please, excuse me. In the past, we, you know, we've recognized an opportunity to provide some more data, some more specific data to get some to some, you know, bigger picture and a broader picture and a more detailed picture about what's happening at the high school. So with with respect to the spring of nineteen data on AP, which of course is what we would have at this point anyway, not taking into, you know, what happened with APs and exams at home and things like that would have that we'll see next year, what that data looks like. But again, sixty percent of our students taking an AP scored a three or higher. Yeah, sixty-eight percent, excuse me. And you can look at some specifics here with respect to, we had an increase in average scores in eight subject areas. Four subject areas remain the same with respect to being within a hundredth of a percentile point. And we had numbers dip down a bit in four areas. But I think overall, to see eight areas increase and nine and and four others kind of negligible changes. It again demonstrates the dedication to the students to those to those AP courses. And you can look at some other, you know, kind of notable scores, AP Psych, AP Environmental Science, the Calculus, the US History. And again, keeping in mind that this is restriction-free. You know, kind of, again, other than students being prepared with the prereqs, you're you are not required to have a certain grade to test into an AP or things like that. And I think this is, you know, very, very, very significant data. I will, you know, kind of to look at two areas that we have always kind of historically looked at is, you know, how can we do better in chemistry? How can we do better in physics? We implemented a model this year to try to make some smaller class sizes and have two teachers two teachers teach the separate sections so that they could work collaboratively and and share ideas more effectively. We'll see what that looks like. Again, those were these were take-home exams at home. But I'm hoping that the kind of that new approach may pay off to see some higher scores in AP Chem and AP Physics. Next slide, please. Some some data from the MCAS in English Language Arts. I think this is, this goes to kind of our accountability data. Very proud of this to share this information with you. If you look at our English Language Arts scores of sophomores, you can see that in all three kind of measured categories here, all students, students in high needs and then students with disabilities, we had scores that were increases. The Navy Blue is the twenty nineteen score, and they exceeded their target points. Very proud of that data. The next slide is the math scores. Again, an increase in each category, still below the target in with respect to our high needs and respect to students with disabilities, but an increase nonetheless. So again, very, you know, I just couldn't be more proud of our students. I couldn't be more proud of our teachers that were getting this kind of, you know, growth in in our MCAS scores. With science, we had an overall, you know, score increase for all students. With science, we had an overall, you know, score increase for all students, but we want to look again at that, high needs and the students with disabilities, as we went down a bit with respect to last, last year's scores or the 18 scores in those two subgroup categories. If you would go to the next slide, please, Patrick. I think this kind of shows, this is more broad with respect to the, respect to the 15 indicators. So if you can kind of take a minute with this chart. So ELA, math, and science, they're measured across five indicators. That's part of our accountability data and our subgroup data. So in the ELA, we exceeded the target in all five measured indicators. In the math, we exceeded the target in, one of the subgroup data, one of the subgroup points met it into and then improved, but still were below the target in two. And in science, met the target in two, improved, but were below the target in one and declined in two. So across the 15 indicators, we exceeded our target in 10 of the 15. We improved, but we're still below in three and declined in two of the 15. So again, when we look at that, those target areas, those subgroups that are measured, we have a lot of structures in place to support students, and I think it's starting to really to show through, through some of this data. One of the things that we've done at the high school that we implemented last year was a, was a math, kind of a math resource center. So students that were in an academic support, that were on IEP, had an opportunity to go and get specific math support during their academic support time. And I think that, again, that we'll see that data kind of pay off in, in some coming months as this was the first year for that, and we're not going to have that MCAS data. But a very, you know, very proud to see that the scores that we have right now are trending in the direction that we have. The next slide, please. What does this say overall for our accountability from last year to this year? I think, you know, again, the data is, is pretty dramatic with respect to progress toward targets and our percentile. And again, that is largely due to the, to the increases that we've seen in those subgroups, students with high needs and students with other disabilities. Next slide, please. So highlights for 2021. You know, again, the, the, what, what is the fall going to look like? You know, we're all, we're all waiting to see what that, you know, what that answer is, but I really feel like we have some optimism for student learning, engagement, and effective instruction regardless of the model. One of the things that we really pushed during the remote learning period was to get data from students, be asking students about their experience. What do they like? What don't they like? So teachers did individual surveys with students around what was working in their class and what wasn't with respect to the remote learning model. Then we had teachers providing feedback with respect to their own experiences and sharing that feedback back and forth across the department level. And then we'll have a final kind of a data feedback sharing opportunity with one last survey for stu, for, for teachers with respect to what worked well and what didn't work well. We've got some new courses that are on tap for the fall. The Boot Camp is in its sixth year for the Common App. Of course, this was the first year that's virtual. But, you know, that is, we are excited for that program. The kids have loved it. The Bridge Program continues in its fifth year this year. This, this may be a year that we need it more than ever. And again, we're all very much in tune with what kind of anxieties and stressors kids will be returning with and how we can address those in the most appropriate way. I'm very excited to, to look at the introduction of the school store. We, we're going to have a, a contest, I think, for what we're going to call it, because I don't think the gold, the green and gold marquardt was a, was exactly the huge hit that I thought it would be. But this is going to be a program that's going to be run with our DECA club and will support our RISE program as kind of an internal vocational learning opportunity. So I'm very excited that that's going to be a new component of the fall, the 2021 school year for us. I think we're going to go to some larger goals here based on our overall school improvement plan. Thank you, Patrick. Again, you know, these goals evolve when we have our school council meetings. And so these are the, these are the, this is kind of the 2019, 2020 version, the evolution of those goals. Advocate for staffing, you know, kind of where applicable and where we need to see staffing supported. Enhancing the educational program. And I think, again, I think we've seen examples of that. One of the, obviously, I think the, the school store in kind of recognizing that there's a need. We have an increased RISE population, and I'm very excited about what, you know, Jonathan Hudson and the, the work of the, of the RISE program faculty is going to be able to provide for those students. Obviously, we, we work to meet the goals of NRPS 2021 and the NIMASK, New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Next slide, please, Patrick. Thank you. And I think as evidenced from the highlights, right, provide as well-rounded a curriculum that we can and a curriculum program that we can for students. Enhancing technology and its application. This is, this, this has evolved a little bit because now we're at this place where we are one-to-one across the board. So what, how do we take this, you know, as much as I, you know, the phrase, what does it really mean? Take it to the next level? What do we, what are we, now that all students have a device? How can we maximize that and gain something more than we've had in the past? So that is, needless to say, a goal for 2021. Complete the obligations that went with the Special Progress Report, and I think I shared that before in a previous meeting with you in January, that, that we have been, our reaccreditation had been approved, and our next cycle is not until another six years. We had a five-year schedule, but they bumped us out a year. So we're all up to date with our NIMASK obligations. Thank you. Again, continued collaboration with the middle school. And I, you know, I think Kathy and I, I'm just so honored to kind of work collaboratively with her. And I think together we are really able to, to maximize the facility and use it in a way that's beneficial for both schools. The curriculum writing that continues with respect to staying on track with our, our current curriculum design, but also being prepared to stay on track with the schedule for the new curriculum, that is the history and social science curriculum that was approved in 2018. And obviously, again, to, as has been said in other, other presentations, you know, continue to use the evaluation model to enhance teaching and learning. So there's a lot there. I appreciate your patience with that. But that is, that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaPret and Dr. O'Connell. We'll do, just like we just did, kind of go around to the committee members and see if there's any comments or questions. And we'll start with the vice chair, Mrs. Imbriano.
Hi, thank you both for your presentation. I guess I, Kathy, you're, if anything, I'd have a question in, in regards to the, the climate control. How many times a year did you do it in the past? It was just once a year, right?
Once a year, but I, I would like to consider doing it more frequently, just given where, where we are.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's a, a very smart thing, and I'd like to see that happen. And then for Mr. LaPret, one of the things that you were talking about was the AP exams. And I was wondering, this year, because it was taken online, how much do you think was due to the difficulties of having it done online and the fact that some of them couldn't get their answers uploaded? So they had to retake it or, you know, kind of get the lesser grade because the, it wasn't a complete test? How much do you think?
Yeah, so you mean the technical difficulties that, that the college board experienced?
Yes.
So the, based on the feedback that I have from the guidance department, is that we, we had maybe one, maybe two students that had a problem. And that was, you know, I certainly was very much in their ear saying, you know, how, where are we on this? Where are we on this? And I did not, the, the report that I got back from the, the guidance staff that was monitoring this, is that it really was not something that was pervasive across our population.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mrs. Botwell next.
Kathy, I just had a, a comment and a question for you. I think what you talked about around the self-referral to the guidance department, I think that data probably can be very powerful for you. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say that the students will walk in and actually fill out a form themselves about why they're there on an iPad?
In phase one of the plan, yes. Phase two down the road, maybe have a link that they could access electronically and not even have to go to guidance.
Okay. Does it have to be student-reported or can it be guidance counselor-reported?
Um, I think initially, we thought it would be to capture the, the reasons the students are refer, you know, coming themselves, but we would be open to, a teacher could refer a student, guidance counselor obviously could, could, anyone could. But we thought it would be great to capture from the student's perspective, why are they going to guidance?
Okay. The only, the only thing, the only reason why I was asking is because when you were saying it, I was like, wow, this could be really powerful data. But then I also know sometimes it takes a lot for a student to get the courage to go to guidance themselves, and that could be a very sensitive topic. So I'm wondering if they learned about this data that they had to report versus like a guidance counselor reporting it behind the scenes on why they came. It, it might make them hesitate a little bit because, you know, that's kind of a private thing that they're, they want to share, and we feel like they're just disclosing it with their guidance counselor in that safe zone. So it just, it just popped into my head, and I feel like I just would share that perspective for what it's worth. But I think it's a wonderful thing that will be powerful data for you to maybe put things in place to address some common outcomes.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at the big picture reasons why students are, what are they struggling with? Not the individual details of the incident or the problem, but the big picture, why, what's going on for them so we can be proactive in our support.
Yeah, I think that's great. And then AJ, for some of the data that you reported, it was great to see, you know, I saw some of the progress with, you know, all students and then students that, you know, might need support and things of that nature, especially on like ELA and math. Do you, that progression that you saw, can you pinpoint it to one or two changes that you made from one year to the next? Or, you know, was there something that was implemented to cause that type of increase?
Well, thank you. It's a great question. I would say there's a couple of things. We certainly have looked to, in, in, let's say, the students with disabilities, students that are on IEPs, is to take a different approach in academic support, assuming that a student has academic support on the schedule, is that how can we kind of break that time up and have a mini module in one skill area? What's something that is, you know, maybe, maybe here's some common vocabulary, it's happening, you know, what you're reading right now. So, and then you can work on your own assignments or things like this. So kind of, you know, break that time up a little bit more, have a general skill that you review, have a couple of focused area type of things that you know kids might be experiencing along with the curriculum, and then, you know, allow them to, you know, use their time as they, as they might want to with respect to getting caught up on assignments or, you know, doing a specific project or things like that. So I think that's one piece of it because we really tried to address it that way. I would say another piece of it is that there's more, you know, this is the, the common assessment piece that's gone across kind of all, that each teacher in the department has embraced, is that what, what do our assessments look like across the board? So then now we all like, you know, have some data that we can work with that's common data and that can speak to certain skill areas or aptitude areas that we want to focus on collectively because we're starting to see some things across the data from some of our assessments.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to you both.
Okay, Mr. Papa Vasilio.
Yeah, I had a thought or rather a question for Dr. O'Connell. The, I remember at, at this time last year or, or partly through the, the school year, you were talking about the, the weekly MTSS sessions for providing academic support. And I thought that was just an excellent idea. Now that you've had most of a year to kind of implement that, do you see that program being, I just assumed that in the fall, we're going to see a lot more kids that are identified by themselves or by teachers needing extra support? And I'm wondering if it's like ready in that model or if it's going to need a shift to widen to, to be able to help more kids?
No, I, I think we're, we're ready to take on any student that needs an intervention because our entire school stops, the whole school stops, and everybody is either teaching an intervention or running an enrichment. So it's just a matter of what are we offering? More interventions, more enrichments? And so actually, in my school improvement plan this year, I identified science as a place where I'd really like to offer interventions. Historically, we focused on ELA and math and not as much on science, but I think, you know, the kids missed three months of hands-on. Science is very hands-on, it's very lab-oriented, and not having those opportunities, I'm anticipating wanting to have interventions in science, and that just means more interventions, less enrichments.
Could they then, just taking that example, are they, I don't want to say regulated, but are they, are, is it possible that some science teachers now would be using those, those time periods to teach labs that maybe they didn't have a chance to teach last year? Okay. So they can really kind of catch up on lessons in a, in a lesson.
The only constraint is that it's an hour a week. You know, maybe we, maybe we determine that we need to have it twice a week, in which case we can certainly do that. It's just then taking away from instructional time that's in a different, used in a different manner.
Sure.
It's instructional time, it's just how do you divide the, the time that we have the students in front of us? But the intervention blocks are much more individualized, much more focused on what that student needs in that moment versus a tier-one instruction that's, you know, the general standards to all students in a science class. So we have the capacity to expand and anticipate that that may be something that we need to do. We also, for those of you that know any, you know, any level of, of information about a multi-tiered system of support, it's not just academic. It can also be behavioral or Acela approach as well. So if we're finding that students really just need that time to process some things with a guidance counselor, certainly we don't have unlimited guidance counselors, but we might be able to have some, you know, some groups where kids can talk about with, with an ex, you know, with an educator, some topics that are concerning them. So if they don't need an academic intervention, there's a possibility that we could provide behavioral or emotional support as well during that time.
Great, great. I, it seems to me like a system that in the best of years is really important, and in extraordinarily difficult years, it becomes just so essential. I think it's a great system to have. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Buckman.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both you, Dr. O'Connell and Mr. LaPret. I guess I don't have any questions, just comments. A couple of quick ones. I, you know, echo Mr. Papa Vasilio's comments about, thank goodness this program is in place as we've gone through this extraordinary year and are about to go through another extraordinary year. I think the middle school is, the, the students in the middle school are probably the ones I worried about the most as I thought through all the things that were happening in the last three or four months. You mentioned executive functioning is one of the things that you watch out for during the MTSS sessions and, and, you know, it's so true that for so many middle school students, they actually make that great leap of executive function during that time. And I worry about, you know, just, you just worry about, is that leap not happening simply because of what's happened in the last three or four months? And, and so I, I, you know, as I say, I echo that, thank goodness that all of this happened as we're developing these programs, as education generals are developing these programs now as opposed to the way. now as opposed to the way it may have been in the past. And on the high school side, um, one of the exciting things about high school, of course, is the student involvement in, in so, at so many levels, including in the stu, in the school council. Uh, I remember the one year I was on the high school school council, some of the great discussions we had with the students who were in, who participated in that group that year, talking through, you know, issues around, uh, programs that we want to be, be able to offer or, or, you know, even talking through incidents that have happened, happened in the school, safety incidents that happened in the school and the students, you know, experience about them. And of course, on so many different levels, we see students i- in our meetings every, every, every time we have a meeting, uh, doing, giving a student report and, and with a great, uh, class body. So, you know, those are, those are just some thoughts I had as we went through this. And, uh, again, thank you guys for your, uh, report tonight and, uh, and for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. As always, I have a few questions as well, so. So the first one for, uh, well, first a warning to, and I know Dr. O'Connell knows it, but Mr. Lepret as well. I think not only are the Buckleys, but the Botwells are also coming to, to the middle school and so.
We're ready, we're excited.
Watch out.
We're invading. So, Mr. Lepret, first and foremost, so I, I appreciate the numbers. I was one that was criticizing no numbers in, in the past, so I appreciate seeing those. Yes. I was commenting, I have comments. But my one question, it seems like year over year, we struggle with science, certain sciences. And, and I don't know what that is, and I don't think we can go too far into that, but my question is, with remote learning, I imagine that of all the subjects, science has to be one of the ones that struggles the most with the remote learning because so much of it is about labs and, you know, it's difficult to do that in person. Do you think that we're gonna see, you know, even more challenging times for remote learning with, with science or are there ways to adapt that where it doesn't i- impact it as much?
You know, I think, yeah, I, I, I can understand the logic that, um, behind your question. I know that there are a lot of, uh, programs out there and kind of online modules that you can watch and kind of demo certain labs and that allows students kind of on their end, on the user side to, to change certain things and try to, you know, see how, you know, X affects Y. You know, I, I think it's a, it's a legitimate concern. I, I would say that we certainly would look to, you know, once we return, see where we are, assess, look at what the best, I know that, I mean, uh, Dr. Downs is great about researching certain, certain software. The, the, the degree of the, um, the faculty and their own individual research about what online modules might work and what online modules might be beneficial for, for student learning. So I think while, while it's a legitimate concern, I think there's a, there's a lot of energy directed toward kind of addressing that and seeing what the best way to combat a possible, uh, slide in that area is. So, uh, I think we'll see, you know, we'll see. Well, I'll, I'll be listening and asking and, and, and following up and, you know, kind of assessing and we'll go from there.
Thank you. And then, uh, one comment, then another question. So the, um, the comment is just my, my brother's a teacher and I've been talking a lot about opening with him. And one thing I know their district really looking at is, is pivot plans. Planning on if this comes up again, you know, shifting curriculum around. I think this year was very challenging because, you know, it was like the analogy, the analogy I feel like I, I saw on Facebook that was most, most, uh, appropriate was, it's like they, they threw all the teachers in the water with the equipment to build a boat and said, while you're, while you're trying to survive, build the boat, you know, and I think for next year, there's gonna be a lot, you know, there, there'll be a lot of planning that goes into it, but I just hope that a lot of them are gonna be flexible where we can really prioritize if we, if things have to come to remote learning where, you know, a pivot can happen where, okay, if we're in school, we're gonna do this. And if we're not in school, these are, these are the areas of the curriculum that are easiest to maybe teach remotely. And I don't know if there's any, been any discussion about, you know, how to, how to look at the curriculum and, and plan it maybe a little bit differently based on, you know, what could happen?
Well, I will tell you that the, the, the departments have been meeting. The way, I mean, you kind of certainly, the way that we made the schedule certainly was helpful for the high school and that kind of our green and gold alternating days on Monday and Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and allowing Wednesday, uh, to be kind of a, you know, kind of a project day, a check-in day, uh, you know, teacher, teacher office hours day, but it really allowed for a lot of conversation at the department level. And in following up with the, with the leadership team folks, I've been, you know, kind of very encouraged by those conversations that, that have been have, that they've been having with respect to exactly what you're talking about. It's kind of, what do we know? Um, and the data we've been able to collect from, from the surveys, both the kind of individual classroom teacher survey and then the, uh, admin to teacher survey. I think there's, there's, uh, there's been a lot of discussion behind those type of things and, and I'm, you know, I couldn't be happier with our, our faculty and their own commitment to, to their work. And I think they're, I think they've had the, the very same conversations you're talking about. What, what can we do in, in a, a model that's gonna work best for students, uh, on this side? And what, what would we really need to do on the other side if, uh, if it went to that kind of like a platooning type experience?
Can I just add to, AJ, I, I agree with what you said, but obviously the, Desi's given us our power standards, which is really helpful to know what to emphasize, but also certainly, I think, at all schools, but I know for a fact at the middle school, we've been keeping accurate, really close detail as to what was taught this, these last three months and what was not taught. And that information is going to be passed on to the inheriting teachers. And that's really important because much of what you learn builds upon itself. And if, you know, if by chance something was, you know, left out or, or not given as much time, it should definitely be revisited if it's a power standard and something that's developmentally essential.
No, it's an excellent point, Kathy. Thanks.
Thank you. And my, my last question to, to both of you is, can you talk a little bit about field trips and the plan for next year? Because I know there's a lot of trips that, again, at the end, some of them got canceled. Is there a plan to try to even plan these trips? Are trips being pushed to the, to the spring semester if they were usually in the fall semester? Um, I'm, I'm just wondering because I know that when, the very first thing that happened with COVID-19 was certain trips that got canceled. And I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion even about, will we have class trips for next year? Will there be a plan for that? Will there be a plan for something different this year? I, I don't know if that's even been discussed yet, but I was just thinking about that because at middle school, I know there's a big trip. I know, you know, at, at the high school, there's a lot of different clubs that have trips. And so has any discussion gone into, will we have any of these trips for next year?
I can start, AJ, just because we just have the big DC trip and no discussion has been had. The, the company that we use wants to have the discussion, and I'm just asking them respectfully, we, we need more time to figure out where we are, where our comfort level is by nature. I'm an extremely, uh, conservative person with other children's, uh, other people's children and to, you know, take adolescents down to DC, I would want to make sure that, obviously, all of us would want to make sure that the safety was the number one priority. So until we have more information, I've just told our vendor, don't count us out yet, but we're not, you know, we're not asking for school committee permission to plan a trip for June 21 at this time.
Thanks, Kathy. Yeah, I mean, I think if you're, if you're talking, you know, kind of a day, like kind of a day trip versus an overnight trip, I mean, obviously there's a big difference there. I think we'll, uh, I would say that I've had a little bit of conversation with our kind of international travel, advisors about, you know, why put the, you know, uh, kibosh on something right now when, when we just don't know? So, you know, that's, those things are, are open, uh, only because they're not completely closed. We're not really pursuing, you know, signups and this and that. I mean, I, I, you know, I'll talk about the fall sports, you know, I had a conversation with, with, uh, Mr. Johnson, just with respect to like, well, I think we want to put out an email about signups and things like this. I said, well, you know, we don't send out anything that doesn't say, there's a kind of the normal timeline that we want to follow, but of course, with respect to where we are and what's happening, you know, we're, you know, we, we're, we're kind of going through the motions right here, but recognize the fact that we don't expect anything to be, you know, looking like A, A, B, or C. So there's a lot of, uh, undetermines out there. So I think, again, the, the overnight versus the field trip, I think, you know, I would say kind of like Kathy, we're, very much a wait-and-see game.
You know, Scott, if I may, uh, interject, I, I, one word that keeps popping into my head as we talk about reopening plans is, is resilience. Any plan we have has got to have resilience built into it. And I think that's a lot of what we've talked about in terms of the ability, for instance, to switch on a dime to, uh, to remote learning in a more planned way than we were, you know, we did an amazing job switching on a dime this year, but, uh, just, just to, just to build that possibility in. And, and the same is true for, you know, a, a dozen or a hundred other considerations that we build resilience into the plan so that it's ready to handle anything that comes down the pike.
Thank you. And, and, I mean, the one, one thing I wonder about the plans also is, I wonder if students can be part of the solution as well. I mean, I know that, you know, when I was in high school, I, I helped a lot of kids that were, I mean, we had a lot of kids that helped other kids, you know, and I think building in the plan where, you know, student leaders, I mean, I think one thing that's been great to see in many different forums here is the, the types of leaders and kids that we have in this district. And so I think, you know, even thinking of like study group leaders and things like that could be, could be a part of the plan going forward because I think we have an amazing student population in this district. And I think if, um, some of them even were part of the solution, it could be helpful. But I want to thank, you know, both Dr. O'Connell and Mr. Lepret for, uh, presenting as well and all the other principals that I see have stayed on here. Um, any final questions or thoughts from anybody else? Okay, well, I, I appreciate that. Before we move back to other things, I did see, uh, Mr. Paul Larson pop in, who I know is another retiring teacher. And so I think we, uh, we missed him earlier, but I did see his name pop in and just wanted to also extend our, uh, our appreciation for Mr. Larson. There's Mr. Larson turning on his, uh, video. I was wondering who was joining us late, but, uh, we, we, you missed our earlier thing, but we, we did want to, from the school committee, you know, really say we appreciate all your years and, you know, thank you as well. And I don't know if Dr. Daley has anything?
Or Dr. McGowan? Yeah, just, just to reiterate what we said earlier, uh, Paul, thank you so much for being with us. Paul, I looked it up, I think it was 23 years of service in the district, which is, which is incredible. And I really enjoyed working with Paul. He's, he's a, the kind of teacher that'll bring his guitar into class and play along with kids, or he gets so excited. Uh, I remember just how passionate you were when we were talking about some of the engineering robotics opportunities over the years, a different professional development. And it's been a real pleasure working with you and, and thank you so much for your service.
Just apologize for, um, being late. I have a, a friend with a medical emergency and I wasn't able to attend earlier. I want to thank you for your many, many kindnesses, for the support that the district has always shown to, uh, the teachers in North Reading and, and how we grouped together and, and just listening for the last half hour or 45 minutes to the discussions of, uh, of the preparedness and they're, they're looking at where we've come from and where you want to go next year and how you're gonna handle things is a testament to how everybody really does a fine job of working together as a team in this district to do the best for our kids, for our community and how it's a community effort and not just one or two people. And it's been a real pleasure and I'm very proud to have been part of that community. I want to say thank you to the school district. I want to say thank you for my wonderful presence, uh, at the end of the year for my service. And, um, I'll be back and looking forward to seeing all of your smiling faces again.
Thank you, Paul. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, so all the principals, you are welcome to stay into the night with us, but you are also excused if you would like to move on. We are going to go to Dr. Daley. We're gonna talk about an update on COVID-19 and the school closure.
I certainly thank our principals and invite them to, uh, take a well-deserved rest for you. So thank you guys for coming.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
So, um, thank you. Yes, I, I've kept this on as a standing agenda item. I think the, the most important thing just to update on at this point is that, um, as was discussed this evening, there are many, um, questions that remain around reopening. We formed a reopening group that does have students in it as well as parents, teachers, administrators, members of all of our, uh, various staff bargaining groups. We've been thinking about how to think about the fall and to come up with questions, but we are now awaiting some, some more guidance from the Department of Ed that I believe will be forthcoming hopefully this week. We'll get a lot more information to consider, um, many of the questions that are out there. But again, you know, we're gonna get guidance now in, in late June, early July, but there's gonna be more, more guidance coming over the summer as, as we're learning more every, every day, so.
Thank you. And I think as, as Bridget mentioned to begin the meeting, I thought the rolling rally went very, very well. I, I think it would be something that, you know, maybe would be something that would be thought about for future years. My, my only question is, I, I know that we can't have an outside graduation until July 18th or 19th. Have we set in any sort of, you know, tentative date yet? Or are we still just waiting?
I, I know that Mr. Lepret is meeting with the class officers now to kind of plan the next details, you know. He and I have discussed some of the advantages of sticking with what we know about the, you know, our, our typical Friday evening kind of ceremony. Just when you think about if everyone's fighting for those same days, not everyone goes on a Friday evening and we might have some advantages, thinking that as opposed to like a Sunday morning or, it'll be less hot and less likely that we're fighting with others for chairs and availability and the like. So, but I, I honestly have no idea where that's going and that's just a thought that I've passed on to him. So, but that, we will have that news soon. We will have a plan soon. We will then need to get all the details, um, approved as, as, is in the, the guidance for graduation ceremonies.
Thank you. Any comments from other committee members or questions about COVID? Seeing none, we move on. So we have a revised budget vote. Um, I think most people are aware there was some computation or, you know, addition and spreadsheet errors. And so at the end of the day, it works out into our favor. We're gonna be able to not cut a position, but I turn it over to, uh, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Connolly.
Uh, thank you Chairman Buckley. So as you alluded to, we did get news, um, at the last finance plan team meeting that there's additional revenue in the town, um, revenue plan that does work in our favor. So that's not, not always the case, but this came to light on June 8th at our finance plan team meeting about a week after we, we thought we finalized the budget and voted on June 1st. So it was certainly, uh, welcome news that we can add back some, some funding and some revenue, uh, into the FY21 school budget. So, uh, there was a memo and some, some updated numbers in your packet, which I'm, I'm sure you've already viewed, but, um, in summary, there was an increase of $66,438 in the revenue plan that can flow directly back into the school-wide operating budget for fiscal '21. So this evening, we're essentially requesting that we take a revised vote and vote a budget that would go from $32,526,778 to the new school department budget amount of $32,593,216 as laid out in the memo. The administration's strong recommendation is to use the additional funding to restore the district-wide digital learning specialist position, which was due to be eliminated as a result of some vacancy and a retirement as part of the balancing of the budget proposal. We certainly feel that with the real opening of school and the, the potential of, of just technology being so, um, much even more, more apparent as part of the, the learning process in 2021, it's a very important position. You know, anyway, it would have been very difficult to lose this position. We, we feel like it's gonna be more instrumental as we look to the future in, in 2021 that we, we, um, would support using this additional revenue to move forward in, in. move forward and, and hire back, you know, this, this position into fiscal '21. But that's essentially what the memo and some of the information speaks to in the handout. There is, is a recommended motion at the end of the memo, and essentially, we're looking at, again, as I said earlier, a budget of $32,593,216. This is an addition of $66,438, which just so happens to be about the, the budget amount of such a position that I just spoke to, the, the district-wide digital learning specialists. And it does represent a 2.6% increase or a little over $835,000 over fiscal year '20. I should, that, that budget motion, that number should be fiscal year '20 at the end, not, not '21, that I just noticed. So if someone's going to actually read the motion, just make sure at the end you read fiscal year '20.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. Very, very quickly, I'd just like to say I agree with where you're trying to restore a position. I think we've learned how important the digital learning positions are right now, and I'd also like to, you know, thank some of the finance planning team members. I know that there was a question about what to do with the additional money, and, you know, the schools the week before had agreed to take on, you know, change the formula a little bit to help the town, and so I think the town officials were behind, you know, i- in fairness sake, giving, helping us restore a position when the money was found. And so I appreciate the, the finance planning team members that supported that addition to allow us to not have to cut another position. So this, I don't know, does any other comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would be happy to make a motion. Move that the school committee, due to additional revenue that has been identified, have identified.
Vote?
Vote to approve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a vote, sorry about that.
The final fiscal year '21 school operating budget of $32,593,216. This represents an increase of 2.6% or $835,443 over fiscal year '20.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And an a as well? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Moving on, we have an update on the paraprofessional contract, and I'll turn this over to Mr. McGowan, I believe, or Mr. Connolly, or Dr. Daley.
Well, I'll, I'll get started, uh, you know, and, but I'll let, I'll leave a lot of the details to, um, uh, Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly, but, uh, I just want to say that the results of the negotiation with the paraprofessionals union I think we can all agree have been pretty successful. Um, I think it was a really good process, uh, and I would just want to express my appreciation to that group, um, for, uh, you know, a really productive, what, two or three months of meetings here during the, during the, the pandemic, where we were able to get a lot done, and I think we going in, we weren't sure exactly what we were able to get done, but we actually made a lot of progress. So I'll leave the details up to Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly.
I would, I would agree very much with that. It restored my faith in the possibility of virtual negotiations. It was actually a very, a very positive experience, and I'm glad we stuck through and got it done. Just a note, as a courtesy to the transcript, I did share with you the document that I'm sharing now on the screen via email, so you'll see that in front of you. Uh, but some of the highlights of this agreement is the new salary schedule that provides a more professional compensation package for the paraprofessionals who do such amazing work with our students and work side by side with our teachers to ensure that our students meet their learning goals and objectives. Cost of living increase, so it's, it's a bit different than you might see. It's split, and I think that the paraprofessionals are very cognizant of the fiscal challenges we face going into, um, the financial challenges going into fiscal '21. So they will get a 1% increase on day one, and then a 90, on day 90, they would get a 2% increase. Uh, they would get a 2% increase on day one of year two of the contract, which is the '21, '22 school year, and then in '22, '23 school year, they would get a 2% increase. So it does amount to a percent raise that's similar to other, other contracts in the district, but they did, they did work with us to recognize the challenges we face in the fall, so we appreciate that. We spent a lot of time about the evaluation process for paraprofessionals, and also a lot of opportunities and updates for training and professional development for our paraprofessionals. And so I think that was something that was mutually beneficial, that we were able to, you know, enhance those aspects of the contract. And then there were many, many technical updates to comply with regulations, and so there was a lot of work done on those aspects as well. So a great overall process, and, you know, Michael spent a great amount of time, when I talk about a prep, a professional compensation package, we, we took a lot of the benefits and rolled them into a salary-style package that we are now going to be working with our paraprofessionals to make sure they understand where they fit on our new scale, and it's going to be much, much easier to retain, hire, and, and work with paraprofessionals that are, that are coming in at such high quality with, with advanced, you know, bachelor's degrees, some with master's degrees and beyond, and and really being able to work with them in an environment that's going to keep them motivated and, and working and doing great things with us. So Michael did, you know, Michael was really just a, a guest member of this group who ended up becoming not only a permanent member, but he was having a lot of outside meetings to make sure that they understood the challenges of this crosswalk to the new system. And we think it's going to be a great benefit to, to all of our pairs, and thank you so much to Michael for your tons of work on this project. So thank you.
Thank you. Great. Well said. Thank you. Yeah, as Dr. Daley said, I think I just strongly believe that this is just a a very professional, you know, way to go about compensating the paraprofessionals in the district who just do such very important, you know, tremendous work, day in and day out. And as I've said many times during the, the conversations, I, I, I believe wholeheartedly that it's a win, it's a win-win. It, it's a win for the paraprofessionals in terms of, you know, recognizing them professionally for, for the work that they're doing, making the contract a little more streamlined, a little bit easier to understand by rolling in some of the, the benefits that were very fragmented into kind of a converted, you know, wage, salary schedule. Um, and I think it allows the district and the administration to have a, you know, a compensation package when we're trying to recruit and hire and, and retain, you know, staff of high quality, something that they can easily kind of understand, and, and we feel it's certainly a very highly competitive, you know, package in, in the area. So we, we felt like it was, it was really a, a win-win for both, both sides, and as everyone alluded to, that was part of the process. It was extremely amicable, extremely professional, extremely collaborative, and I certainly appreciate everyone's efforts. It was a great team effort for all involved.
Well, thank, thank you, thank you to all of you for, for handling that. I think it's, you know, very important that we keep very good relationships with our unions. They've been very flexible with us. But our last meeting, we were talking about, you know, them giving back some things that they didn't have to do under the contract. And so, you know, I think it's good to have working relations. Just as a foreshadowing, at our next meeting will be our reorganization meeting. We're going to talk about the schedule in a little bit, but at that meeting, I think we should, in addition to reorganizing, I think we should think about the contracts for next year. There are a number of contracts that are up for negotiation next year, including the teachers, the NREA one. So I think when we're thinking about distributing work for next year, I think we should think not only about subcommittees, but I think we also need to think about these, these contracts, because even though there's a lot of uncertainty about the fall, I think it shows a lot of respect that we want to, you know, not delay these, these negotiations and these contracts, and so now I hope that we can, you know, think about, you know, maybe as early as this summer about who is going to be taking on which responsibilities next year. So, um, so I think we need to have a vote for, you know, to approve this contract, and so I would turn it over to Mr. McGowan, who worked on this contract.
Do we have a, do we have a recommended motion, or shall I just make one off the cuff here?
Yeah, I don't have it written there, so I'm sorry.
Okay. So are we, we're voting to approve the whole contract or the memorandum of understanding? Just the whole contract, right?
Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion that the committee vote to approve the negotiated contract between the North Reading Public Schools and the School Committee and the Paraprofessionals Union. Apologize for not having their official name, as discussed.
I'll second.
Any other comment? Okay, take a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Now we move on to town warrant articles. Now, I actually asked Dr. Daley to put this on, on the agenda. I think everybody knows we're going to be having a town meeting on, you know, on Monday, uh, June 29th. Now, I don't know what everyone's comfort level is about attending a meeting. I still think it's not 100% clear if it's going to be in, inside or outside. But what I do think is important that, you know, that the school committee does express its voice on, on warrant articles that concern the schools, and so I think rather than meeting for a half hour before, if, if some people aren't able to attend the, the meeting, I'd like to just very quickly take our vote on the warrant articles that I think address the schools and we should probably be heard on. And so if you will allow me to, I'll just kind of walk through very quickly. Warrant article number 14 is the operating budget. So it's a town operating budget, which includes the school numbers that Mr. Connolly went over earlier today. I don't think there's a lot of discussion needed on this, but, um, you know, I would like to, you know, again, have a, a vote from the committee so that whoever, you know, feels comfortable coming can come on Monday night, but we, you know, hopefully have all five of our votes for a town meeting. So if somebody wouldn't mind making a motion on article 14 to approve the FY2021 operating budget?
So are we voting to that we recommend passage of the warrant article?
Correct, that we, that we recommend.
I, so I will move that the school committee vote to recommend, uh, article 14 from the town meeting warrant for June 29, 2020.
I'll second that. With a sidebar, do we need to put in all of the figures or just as written in the article, in the warrant?
I don't think we need, I think we need to just say as, you could say as written in the warrant.
Yeah, as written in the warrant, yeah.
Actually, I don't even know if it's in the warrant. I think it's going to be discussed at town meeting.
Yes, I believe they have to send, hand out a, an amendment.
Correct. But yeah, the, again, it's already, it's already printed as recommended by the select board and the finance committee in the, in the warrant, so. Okay, so we'll just go through and take a roll call. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And an a as well, so passes 5-0 unanimous. The next one I think we should vote on is article 15, which talks about another financial one. It's a capital improvement or capital expenditures, FY2021. Capital expenditures, unfortunately, this has been a bad year. We're not getting too much for the schools, to be perfectly honest, but many of those, basically by, by not having so many capital expenditures, that's some of the one-time fund that we're able to use to balance our budget for the year. So I would be in favor of supporting this one, and, and would love to have a another motion to recommend article 15.
Uh, okay, I'll go. I, I moved that school committee vote to recommend article 15 from the June 29, 20 town meeting warrant on capital expenditures as written in the, in the warrant.
Keep it simple for Cindy, and I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. Passes 5-0 again.
Thank you, Janine.
Make the next one. And the, the other, the remaining articles are 19 through 23, which are our recommendations. So they all relate to solar and the LED project. I don't think we have to go through in too much detail for here, but, you know, Michael can jump in if there's any, if there's anything I'm missing here, but the first one will be article 19, which talks about, you know, authorizing lease of the roof.
One, I'm sure, I'm sorry, Mr. Buckley, this is Michael Collins. I have one question. Is it, I don't know if you feel like it's necessary, but article 16 does, does cover school employees as well. So I don't know if, if you want to take any action on that one. It's the retirement obligations?
Yeah, I saw, I saw that one, and I thought, I thought about that one. I don't think we did it last year, but I think it's perfect time to do that, and so, yeah.
I think it's handled at the town level anyway. Isn't it, isn't it something that's really handled that, that sort of above the line, so to speak? So not really, I mean, you could go either way.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I just didn't want you to get to the meeting and then think that you should have taken action on it. So it probably is fine either way. I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we voted on it last year, and so and I'm, I'm okay either way, honestly, like as, as Rich mentioned, um, but yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know too much about those numbers either, to be perfectly honest, which is why I
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Yeah. Since I haven't seen those numbers, I'd be a little bit hesitant to, you know, officially recommend it. So, so I would, I would move on first. The, the next article that I think we should vote on would be article 19. Um, this is the first of the solar panel art, articles, and this one specifically talks about authorizing the lease of the land or rooftop space for the solar photovoltaic facilities. Um, if anybody has questions, they can ask them, but I think we should just do a motion to recommend article 19 of the warrant.
So I will move that the school committee vote to recommend passage of article 19 in the June 29, 2020 town meeting warrant as printed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions on this? Okay, roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
You mean Chris?
No, Chris.
Oh, Chris. Excuse me. So you get two votes this time. I'm an a as well, so passes 5-0 unanimous.
Six to nothing.
Now, moving on to article 20. This is again in the solar, the solar grouping. This is to authorize the electricity supply for on-bill credit purchase agreements. So I think if I could have a motion to recommend article 20.
I will move that the school committee vote to recommend article 20 in the June 29, 2020 town meeting warrant as printed.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote again. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm a, I'm an a as well. Passes 5-0 again. Number, and 20 might be the one we're going to pass over, right, Michael, or?
That's correct. We don't look to be, looking to do a contract or an agreement of this type, so we, we could pass over that.
Okay. Um, article 21, an authori, to authorize us to enter an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes. And so again, hoping to have a motion to recommend article 21.
I will move that the school committee vote to recommend article 21 in the June 29, 2020 town meeting warrant as printed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? The roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. Passes 5-0. And the last one on the solar, the article 22, to establish a school rental revolving account. Um, the nice thing about this would be that we'd be establishing a revolving account to offset some of our expenses, and so the select board is in favor of this as well, which I appreciate. Um, so we can have a motion to recommend article 22.
I will move to, that the school committee vote to recommend article 22 in the June 29, 2020 town meeting warrant as printed.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. I'm an I as well. Five zero. And the final warrant article is Article 23, which is to authorize the lease for the LED lighting project. I believe we've already, I know we've talked about this before. I don't know. I can't remember if we did a motion already, but this is, we need town, you know, town meeting approval to enter into a lease of five, of the length of five years. And so that is the goal of this article. And so I entertain a motion to recommend Article 23.
I move that the school committee vote to recommend Article 23 in the June 29, 2020 town meeting warrant as written.
Second.
Other questions? Roll call vote. Rich?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Pass this five zero. Thank you very much, everyone. And again, if you can attend town meeting, we would love to see everybody. If people can't attend or they don't feel comfortable, we will have our voices and our votes heard either way. So thank you all.
Did they make a change to the quorum required?
There is, yes. The town, well, yes, town meeting, finance committee chair checked with the moderator and and the town clerk and clarified that there is, that you could vote before, as long as a vote happened, there's no quorum required at the actual town meeting. And so, so for the finance committee, we don't know how many people are going to attend that meeting. But at least the chair will be there and they, they are planning on voting either the day before or maybe earlier in the day. So they're going to be.
I would take a, a quorum for the whole meeting though.
There is no quorum required for an annual town meeting, only for special town meeting. The special town meeting for, related to the turkey farm has been postponed. Yep. So it's only, we're only having the town meeting. It's been, it's been narrowed down to only the things that we really need. But yes. Okay, so moving on. Now we have the solar recommendation and proposal information. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mr. Connolly.
Great, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So to go along with the town meeting warrant articles that you just went through and approved, as you know, we've been researching and doing a review of proposals received for a solar array project at the middle school and high school. I'm happy to report this evening that we have the, the evaluation committee, which consisted of myself, Wayne Hardaker, Kathy O'Connell, and a consultant that is very familiar with these types of projects in the state, reviewed all of the proposals that we received and we have identified a most advantageous proposal known as ECA Solar LLC. You know, there was a lot of information in the packet that I kind of just put in there in case you're interested and really wanted to read through. You know, all the analysis that went into reviewing the, the four proposals that we did receive, three of which we considered to be worthy of, of our ranking and that met the qualifications, one of which we didn't felt met the minimum qualifications. It was actually disqualified, but we, we did feel like there was three proposals worth considering. And based on price as well as the, the non-technical, non-price, you know, service experience and qualifications aspect of the proposal, we believe strongly that ECA Solar is the most qualified and the most advantageous proposal. We felt that their proven success and experience working in such a market and their price proposal reflects that their contract structure that they chose to, to provide of a fixed operating lease was certainly one that would yield the greatest revenue to North Reading. They have experienced success working with the Reading Municipal Light Plant. I subsequently this week checked their references or at the end of last week, and they were all very, very good. So definitely gotten some very good, good feelings from this firm. And I'm certainly prepared this evening to make a motion that we recommend that we take the appropriate steps to, to move forward with ECA Solar and identifying them as, as the award of this, of this project. So what we essentially are looking at is, is no, no bitter sort of kind of felt that the ground area that we identified was, was worthy of, of, of use, given that that was high pitched. So it wasn't very advantageous for us to pursue a, a ground array fixture. But the, the middle school, high school roof was certainly an optimum area. And ECA Solar chose to bid a fixed operating lease, meaning that we wouldn't actually be using the energy and entering into a kind of a three-way agreement with the ECA Solar, RMLD and the school department to of the sale of that energy and how we're going to use that energy. We would just take a fixed operating lease, monthly lease payment for them to, to use the, the roof space. And then they would work out the sale of that energy back to RMLD. And RMLD I have spoken to, they're, they know where we stand in the project. They know the company that we're recommending. They, they have been in conversation. RMLD was pleased to hear that it was ECA Solar because they've worked with them in other projects and they're, and they've enjoyed working together. So certainly feels like that everything is certainly aligned, that it, it makes you very comfortable to make a recommendation of ECA Solar this evening. There was a recommended motion in the memo that was provided. There was a lot of other information about the, the ranking and, and the pricing and, and you know, the, the process that we went through, but that, that was more for your information if you wanted to get into the details. So that being said, I'll open up to any, any questions.
Any comments or questions?
I have sort of a general question. Michael, what are, do we, have we identified, what are the risks of the plan to the, to the district? Are there any? Or I mean, is this, what can go wrong after we've sort of signed up? Is there, what, what are the risks that go along?
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good question. And the, you know, the next steps after we have officially identified ECA Solar is that we would work on, you know, getting the appropriate permitting and licensing and, and, you know, contract execution. And the idea is that we would minimize any risk with, through the, through the contract with the appropriate insurance requirements, payment, performance bond requirements that would all be at a sort of 100% of the contract. So we would certainly, you know, identify the, the school department and the town of North Reading from any potential damage, but you know, so if, if the, the contract would be, would be structured in such a way that if there were to be damage to the roof in any such a way, that they would be responsible for making that repair and restoring the, the condition back to how it was. If the structure isn't producing, you know, they would be responsible for replacing the panels and, and, and all that. They would sort of bear that responsibility. So there's always that level of risk that over time through, you know, wear and tear that, you know, we would may need to repair areas of the roof or replace certainly, you know, panels. But that, that would be on the contract. It would bear that responsibility. And we would be protected by insurance as well as performance, performance bonding on, on the contract through the contract, you know, execution process. So I'm being told this is kind of similar, sort of pretty typical type of, of contract language for these types of agreements. And that was kind of laid out in the RFP and it should be expected by the contractor that that's, that's what the arrangement will be. We'll certainly plan to have town council be heavily involved in the, in the reviewing of such contract language and the executing, execution of each of such contracts, so.
Other comments? Janine?
Yeah. As it stands now, is it like a forever lease or is it a 10-year lease, 15, 20? Can you speak to that length?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's a 20-year lease. The expectancy life, life of the, of the arrays is to last for 20 years. So we will receive a fixed monthly and annual payment over the 20-year life of the, of the project and of, of the lease. So it's, it's, it's a guaranteed amount right now of $102,600 annually. And there are potentials. So we, we are certainly working with the, the ECA Solar has certainly agreed to take another look at the, the roofing structure, do a, do maybe a more of a thorough shading analysis. And if they're able to get more, more panels safely onto the roof, they've already identified areas that they think they can increase up to 200 panels that they were not part of their original proposal. So if that's able to happen, that $102,000 could increase. And they, they, they realize that. But I think we're, we're hopeful that we could potentially negotiate that through the contract and potentially increase the size of the array and the production of the array, and then subsequently increase the, the fixed monthly payment and annual payment to the district. So. But it, it, to answer your question, it's a 20-year, 20-year payment.
And that, that, oh, you're around, but happens after 20 years.
For the 20 years, they come and they remove, and they remove the structure and they, and they take it away.
I, I hope Mrs. Embriano means won't be on the school committee in 20 years. Just to clarify for the record. Yeah, Mr. Connolly, thank you for your, your, your leadership in this area. I think, yeah, I mean, again, the kilowatt hours it looked like from ECA looks a little less than some of the other projections, but ultimately, I think there's going to be a lot that should be put into the contract. There's risks both ways. I mean, the reality is the price of this could go up quite a bit over time, but, you know, they're making a commitment and they're spreading out their costs basically over the 20 years. And, you know, if we can get more than $100,000 a year to offset some of our energy cost and, you know, as, as we saw in the warrant articles, that we're able to literally use that to offset some of our other energy costs. I, I think it's a great thing and I think it's, you know, advantageous economically to the district, but also, you know, environmentally as well, trying to use as much solar power as we can. So I think it's a great deal all around. So I really appreciate you taking the leadership on that, Mr. Connolly.
Great, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
And so if we can maybe have a motion to approve the, well, the motion that's on the screen, if somebody wants to read it.
The North Reading School Committee, as recommended by the administration, authorizes that, sorry, I need my glasses on, ECA Solar LLC, be identified as the most advantageous firm to execute the solar project at North Reading Middle and High School and authorizes the administration to pursue the necessary steps for approval on this project with the appropriate town officials.
I second. Okay, any more comments or questions? We'll do a roll call vote. Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we did the assistant superintendent update. I think Mr. Colleen has stayed with us, so congratulations again, Mr. Colleen. We're moving to the proposed school committee meeting schedule for next year. Dr. Daly, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you very much. Including your packet is just the recommended dates for the meetings for next year. I did suggest a presentation, discussion and vote, but there may be some discussion and then we could vote to approve this again in the future, or I can make recommendations based on tonight. One of the things you'll note is that I added some dates split. I made some suggestions for possible Thursday evenings as well as some Monday evenings for us to consider. I do also note that the July 29th, that's a roll forward from last year. And for most of these dates, I rolled forward the, the schedule from this year. But since we are meeting in, in July already, it might be a good idea for us just to maybe combine that goals workshop with our, with our other meeting as well.
I, I, I agree. I think, I think the July 29th, because July 29th already says a goals workshop and a regular meeting. So if we only need one in July, I think we could just do the current July 20th meeting. And so I would, I would, I would, I would propose that. And are you proposing to accept this calendar with the alternative, you know, Monday slash Thursday dates for now, or are we, are we trying to decide between them right now?
Yeah, I was proposing a little bit of a discussion and maybe I can, I can workshop it and bring back something for the July meeting or, or send it out for some conversation as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'll begin the discussion, which I had said beforehand, and my, my concern is just with my own personal travel. In the past, when I used to travel, I often would leave on Thursday evenings for, you know, maybe Friday and Saturday meetings. Some Mondays tended to work out better. Now, I might be able to adjust that. I don't know what's going on with, with travel and maybe I'm resalivating at the idea of me not being to, to some of the meetings. And so, you know, then maybe that, maybe that just got four votes for, for Thursday nights, but I think that's my, my only concern is I think there's so much up in the air about what next year looks like. I appreciate the goal of trying to maybe not have them all at the end of the week or the beginning of the week and and also conflicting, especially around budget time with the select board meetings. I'm wondering if something like a Wednesday night would be, would be okay with other people because I, I don't know what other people think, but like the problem with Thursdays for me is that if I'm traveling for Friday, Saturday, or even for weekend stop, a lot of times it's Thursday evening. Would you, would you be amenable to Wednesday nights occasionally, Dr. Daly?
I, I would certainly be amenable to whatever works for, for folks scheduled, yes.
Do other people want to comment on Monday, Thursday, Wednesday, whatever?
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in. And again, this just kind of comes down to my personal schedule, which at the moment is rather in flux, which means it's, it's much easier for me to commit to one given night regularly than it is to have it be something that varies. That would be potentially tricky for me going forward.
But you're flexible on which night that is at the moment?
Uh, yes, yes. Monday would work fine. Wednesday would work fine, I, I believe. I, I don't have any reason to think that one would be better or worse than the other. I, I agree with Scott that I think that Thursday, this one isn't for me, but it seems like it would start to get a little bit harder for people or require a bit more bending.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I'm, I'm flexible, probably more flexible than it sounds like some of you guys are. So I'll, I'll defer and, and, you know, leave the discussion to those who have potential conflict. I, I could go either way.
Mrs. Batwell?
Like I've mentioned before, before when I was traveling for work, I definitely went every Thursday. My travel was supposed to increase to two days a week, which was going to be planned most likely for Wednesday and Thursday, coming back Thursday evening. I cannot say that that is going to be a, a normal for me anytime soon. I, I genuinely don't think it will. So, but I can't really predict when that travel will start again and if those days will change. So I, I wouldn't base it on me. I just know in my past, those would be challenging days for me and I've always kind of kept those Monday nights open.
Mrs. Embriano, any preference?
I'm with Mr. McGowan. I'm pretty flexible. So whatever guy, whatever day works best for the ones who need the flexibility more is fine with me.
And, and, and the only other comment would be about the timing, because I think part of this is it's the beginning of the week and it's really pushing people out. And when we went from seven to six thirty, it was a little bit challenging when I was coming from Boston, but I have a feeling the new norm is going to be a little more flexibility and working from home. And so I was one of the ones that didn't really want to meet too much earlier. What, what, what's the committee's thought about earlier meetings? Like maybe even, and, and I don't know, Dr. Daly, if you'd want something like this, but like even if it was maybe a 5:30 start where, where executive sessions could begin at five sometimes, I, I don't know if that would help, but that'd be something you'd be interested in or not interested in?
I would certainly be interested in that as well. I think Michael would as well.
I, I can jump in that that would be incredibly difficult for me.
Okay.
It would, it would almost guarantee him missing sometime.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, let me throw this out here. How much can we leave this sort of open and open to exploring as the year goes on? I think the, the meeting schedule establishes what weeks we're going to have meetings and, you know, we can tentatively plan them a certain way, but you know, we're not locked in stone going forward. So we can either schedule them all or schedule most for Mondays, but look for opportunities to switch them or I'm just, you know, we're, we're not locked into, this is the schedule for the rest of the year. I think it's helpful if you can do that, but I don't think it's like a requirement, right? I think it's helpful if you can do that, but I don't think it's like a requirement, right?
Yeah, I I I agree. And I that's exactly where I was gonna go right now, Mr. McGowan. I think the I think the cadence of the meetings is correct. I think the content of the meetings is correct. I just think so much is up in the air about the fall. I mean, two of the committee members may or may not be traveling. And if we aren't traveling, there probably won't be conflicts. One of the committee members is beginning a new adventure and for, you know, his career. We don't know if it's going to be virtual and that could change too. Like if it's a virtual meeting versus a, you know, versus a meeting where you have to be in person. And so I I think for now, this is a good guidance. We really only need to, we really only need to post, you know, a week in advance, not even a week in advance. And so I think if we talk about having the, maybe maybe we even just approve having the goals workshop at the July twentieth meeting right now. Maybe we approve August twenty fourth for the summer meeting. And then we, you know, maybe push everything else back. I don't know if that's enough for now, but I I think we just need to see what's going to happen for next year. And all of us that are, you know, working have to figure out what that is. And I appreciate the, I I want to be as flexible as I can because I don't want to. I know that, you know, especially when schools in session, Dr. Daly and Mr. Connolly are at work very early. Um, and I know that, you know, extending to, you know, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night for meetings is really tough. And I don't, especially at the beginning of the week. And so I I I think we all want to be as flexible as we can. It's just hard to commit to that quite yet. And so I I I'd be open to being flexible if if we have the ability to. But I don't want to be flexible and then only having three or four members able to attend because I think that's not fair to the community. I mean, that elected people to speak on their behoves.
So I wonder if I might propose that, except for the modification of of making the goals workshop on July twentieth, that we approve the meeting schedule as a as a tentative meeting schedule with those multiple dates in there on those weeks that they have multiple dates. And that the final date will be determined, uh, you know, as we get closer? Or do we want to just choose the next couple of dates and call that good for now?
I'm open to either.
I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on it.
Either is fine by me.
I mean, again, we can put it out there and just then then people know the content there or whatever and have that idea. And we'll just figure out the specific day of the week and the time. I mean, I do think it would be nice to have some sort of cadence if we could, the same night. I mean, we we could just have Friday evenings at seven o'clock and do a drink and hand every night, so. Okay, so do you want you want to make a motion on a tentative approval of of this calendar for now?
So I guess I would move to approve this tentative calendar. I I moved that the school committee vote to approve the tentative calendar as provided in the by by the administration, with the exception of July twenty ninth, uh, that we move that goals workshop to the July twentieth previously scheduled meeting.
Second. Oh, go ahead. Chris can take that.
I agree to it. I second. Okay, we'll roll call. Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead.
Also bring up that we might want to look at, um, uh, and I'm not sure that it's it's other than in this emerg- other than in the emergency as declared by the governor, we might want to look into the ability to to allow some members to participate remotely once the emergency is lifted. I don't think we, in our in our policies and procedures, I'm pretty sure we don't allow that, or at least it's not explicitly allowed.
Yeah, I think, I mean, for right now, it has to first be approved by the select board in order to be able to participate remotely. And so I, again, I I agree that I I think that's another thing that might change going forward. Because one thing that I like about this is I feel, even though not many people have utilized it, I do feel that in many ways, this actually allows more participation from the public. And so I think remote meetings have a positive advantage as well. And so, I mean, I I would I would be in support of of doing that. Um, and we all ran expecting to have to come to in-person meetings. And so I think we have all made that commitment if we need to. But I I like the ability of 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 members of the public being able to attend if they, you know, i- if they do have concerns, so. Okay, mo- moving on, before we go to routine matters, I just wanted to take a minute or two to recognize that we all heard this week that we are losing our transcript reporter. So Jillian String is is on the call and she has been a wonderful, you know, reporter for us for for quite some time now. Like I think she, a- as most of you know, I'm very inarticulate, but somehow she makes me seem a little more articulate when when the paper comes out. And so I just, I think, I think most people don't come to these meetings and it is important for the public to know what's going on. And I think that most people, the only access that they have to what's going on in the schools is either from, you know, Facebook, which is often not very, is not accurate, or the transcript. And so so many people, you know, rely on the transcript for a, you know, an accounting of what is happening in the schools. And I think Jill has been a tremendous advocate of the schools for, you know, her whole time there. And obviously, she's just reporting on the information that's there. But I think she's a great advocate for our schools. And so I just want to thank her for for her years of service.
Thank you, Scott. That's that's really nice of you to say. But I I think you you guys really have made this easy for me. You know, you are always prepared. All the presentations are always great, so you're all very quotable, so I thank you for that.
You've done a fantastic job, Jill. You've always presented such a fair and accurate, detailed report. And and I really appreciate working with you. It's only been a short time I've worked with you as superintendent, but I really appreciated all the support you've given our schools over the years and certainly to me in these last few months especially. So thank you.
No, you're welcome. And and best of luck. I know you you had to jump in in this sort of crazy time, so, you know, hats off to you because I I think it's it's gone as well as can be.
Thank you. Okay, any other thoughts or comments? I just think one of the few people that's actually there every week with us. And so, you know, you you and Cindy have become the the go-tos and so.
It's like a Greek chorus over there.
I know. You're the, uh, you're you're the band's entourage, so. Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, moving on, routine minutes, we're gonna, or routine matters. I turn over the minutes to vice chair, Mrs. Embriano. Do you want to give us a motion on the June first minutes for the regular session?
Certainly. I move to accept the regular open session meeting of June first as written.
I'll second.
Okay, any issues in there?
I really see any, I don't think. And I read through it quickly, but I didn't see anything wrong.
You're saying Cindy got it right?
I think so.
Not surprised. Okay, we'll roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
I think I have to abstain.
Oh, yes, I forgot. You and you and Chris were not there and so, but I'll, but I have to do the vote anyways, Chris.
Abstain.
And I'm a I, so it passes three to zero.
And I have to say, Ann Lindell picks up any mistakes. So kudos to Ann also.
Okay, and for the executive session, Janine?
Oh, and hold on. All right. I move to accept the executive session of June first as written.
Sorry, second.
You're the only one that can, Rich, or I guess I could. Okay, we'll do roll. Any any errors or changes?
No.
Okay, roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Abstain.
Chris?
Abstain.
And I'm an I, passes three to zero as well. Thank you very much. Moving on, budget update. I don't think there's anything more. Mr. Connolly?
None at this time.
Uh, Staffing, Dr. Daly?
None at this time.
Okay, bids and donations, we go to Mr. McGowan. And remember, there's one separate one as well outside of the original packet.
Yes, let me get that handy. Where is that here? Uh, maybe not. Can you pop it on the screen, Patrick, or the the additional one?
I can't hear your comment.
The additional one, other than the general.
The additional one I don't have in front of me.
I'll put it. I'll put the other one on the screen. Yep, it just, the packet would.
Okay, I'll start with the two in the packet. So I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of six thousand six hundred and three dollars for personal protective equipment, including face masks, gloves, gowns, face shields, goggles, Clorox wipes for the North Reading School Department from Veterans Business Supply, Inc.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero unanimous.
I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from Reading Cooperative Charitable Foundation to provide a scholarship for Joseph Hedley, a student at the high school.
Second.
Any comment or discussion?
And I just should just say that Reading Cooperative Charitable Foundation is a is a sponsored by the Reading Cooperative Bank.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Hi.
Mrs. Embriano?
Aye.
Mrs. Batwell?
Aye.
Mr. Pappas Vassilio?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Passes five zero. Thank you.
I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of eight thousand dollars from the Bachelor Parents Organization to be used towards water bottle filling stations at the Bachelor School.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, we'll roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero. Thank you to the Bachelor Parent Organization.
And I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation amounts totaling two thousand twenty-eight dollars from the from the before-school childcare parents on the above list who opted to donate their refund their refund amount back to the school district to help support costs associated with the before-school childcare program. And I will read the family names. The Arien Atchison family, the De Perio family, the Heck family, the McGoldrick family, the Kepper family, the Sei family, the Shomp family, the Ottaviano family, the Damato family, the Kepti family, and the Barabani family.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Thank you again to the generosity of people who are donating back money that they paid for something that they didn't get all of. Uh, the roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero. Thank you very much. Subcommittee update, seems that none of the subcommittees are doing much this year. But we'll do the finance planning team from June eighth. I think very simply, I will give the update of, we talked about the found money, which we've talked about a couple of times now. We talked about town meeting, about when it would be held and where it would be held. And I think that's most of what we spoke about. Michael, Patrick, Janine, am I missing anything?
Yep, that's correct. That's what we'll be talking about tomorrow also.
And our next meeting is tomorrow morning at eight AM. So I get, we get to go till ten PM tonight and start again at eight tomorrow, so. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
Sure, thank you so much. I I just wanted to share about the SEAL by Literacy, which I know has been covered tonight by Bridget Gru and by Mr. LaPret as well. I just wanted to point out, you know, how how great our team has been, you know, having so many students that speak multiple languages. Amy Center Noda, a Director of World Languages, has done a fantastic job in in promoting this program and helping to organize it. Nicole Orlando, my administrative assistant to the Assistant Superintendent, has done a fantastic job as well coordinating a lot of the tests and things for our students. Not only do we have students achieve the SEAL, they also achieve the SEAL with distinction. And we had two students this year assert, achieve something that's not even been recognized by the state yet, which is tri-literacy. So essentially, the students completed the all the English requirements plus the requirements for the SEAL in multiple languages beyond English, which is just, they're called partner languages. It's just fantastic achievement. And we're we're among some of the first in the state that I'm aware of that have students that have done this in in those areas. And it's really something to be commended. So we have sent out some awards to those students, SEALs. They get a nice diploma, sorry, a SEAL on their diploma and and will be mentioned at graduation as well. Students are going to be recognized through a variety of ways in the in the newspaper, but also Sheila Barrett, a sister of a student in the in the graduating class, made a wonderful video that got shared out and I tweeted that out as well on social media. And it's really quite a quite a project that got put together. So I just really wanted to highlight that again. Really great program that's been many years in the in the making. And North Reading has been one of the the early adopter groups and and we've done a great job at this program. And it's only going to expand as our as our world language program goes and expands. I think we're going to start to see more students that are that are meeting these benchmarks. So it's it's a great goal for us.
Thank you very much. Uh, any correspondence at this time?
None at this time.
So for future business, on June twenty ninth, and actually, I just thought about this, Dr. Daly. I think we might have to change, we might have to have a reorganization meeting on June twenty ninth since we're going to be meeting officially, right?
If we are, yeah, if everybody's participating in that meeting, yes.
Do people know if they're going to be able to attend town meeting?
It most likely will be outside if that makes sense.
I know that I will not be attending.
Okay.
I don't know yet.
Okay, I'm gonna have to see. I guess we don't have to have the meeting. We we, I don't I don't think we have to have that. I mean, I had reached out to Barbara Stats, the Town Clerk, to see if there was any timeline in which we had to reorganize. And she said there's not, so we could wait until July twentieth meeting. I asked about, you know, calling someone to something into session because if you recall, after elections typically, you know, Mr. Bernard had previously brought the, had had opened the meeting. But she said that, you know, assuming that I am elected again and and there is a chair, that I am able to open a meeting still because nothing has changed. So I think we could still, I guess, push that off till July twentieth still. I I will confirm that with Miss Stats.
Yeah, I think that's what we should do, especially if not everyone's going to be there. But it, you know, it's more than a half hour. Usually, we're just getting together really with really with no business in advance of the town meeting and and the reorganization takes longer than the half hour, so.
Correct. So I'd rather not do it then. And so as long as that's okay with with, you know, procedurally, that even though there's been an election, I don't think any, the composition of our committee most likely will not be changing unless there's a surprise coming up. And then I don't really care what you do, so. Now, so for June twenty ninth, do we need, we need an executive session, Dr. Daly, on that day or not?
I I followed what I'd seen in other plans. This 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 was already scheduled for the year. So I believe that session would be mostly to talk about some of the Warren articles. I don't know if I can weigh in at all.
Yeah, I mean, I typically would go over a a presentation, should it be necessary for the budget. Fortunately, in the past, it hasn't been, you know, necessary. Um, I also, I prepared a, I prepared a presentations for both the operating budget article as well as the solar articles. I have about a five-minute PowerPoint presentation for both, and I would typically share it at that meeting.
Yeah, and and most likely, there will not be a PowerPoint, Michael. It's going to be mostly handouts and the like if we're outside. So we'll discuss for tomorrow, but I think would be just just a little time to review exactly what we would be presenting if if we're called up.
But I think I think we need that time, but I don't think it needs to be executive session because, you know, there's only certain purposes we can go into executive session for. And I don't think, I mean, usually we meet in the conference room, but I don't believe it's an executive session at the time. I mean, usually we meet in the conference room, but I don't believe it's an executive session at the time. So I think it should just be.
I think that's right.
I think it should just be posted as a general meeting at 6:30, um, for people that can attend. And we'll have to figure out where that is, but I don't think that'll be an executive session. It'll just be us meeting, um, prior to the town meeting at seven o'clock.
So if the, uh, if the, uh, town meeting ends up being on the field, maybe we should meet in the, uh, in the bathrooms next to the field.
The Webster Washroom?
Exactly.
Well, that, that, that's the next time we'll be together is, is June 29th, um, and then July, and then July 20th. Is it 20th or 22nd? I thought it was July 20th, right?
It's a Monday evening, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's July, July 20th, not 22nd. We will have a meeting at 6:30 PM as well, presuming it will also be virtual. Um, at that point, we'll plan on probably doing the reorganization. So we'll talk about subcommittees. We'll talk about chair and vice chair. We'll talk about, you know, other positions. Then we'll talk about, you know, ideally, I'd like, like to be able to think about, you know, the, the contracts as well that are going to be up for negotiation, because I think in particular, the NREA negotiation could take a lot of time. Historically, there's been two members of the committee, I believe, on that negotiation. Um, and so I do think we should think about that when we're assigning duties to make sure that we can sort of fairly and equally share the burden.
Yes, I will. Those are typos there. Should be July 20th. You're correct.
Okay.
And, and the next me, so the idea for the 29th, though, it's not a virtual session. It would be a face-to-face at a, a location to be determined, most likely, somewhere at the middle high school campus.
Yes. Yeah, I think the only change there is it won't be executive.
Yeah. Well, that's.
Rather than meet in the conference room, maybe it's just a larger space, just a field.
Yeah, I mean, the DHL would probably work and just spread out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business? Thank Mr. Colleen for sticking with us the whole time. Jill, we will miss you. And we'll entertain a motion to dismiss.
I move adjourned. It's been a long one, folks.
So it's one of you.
I, I said it first.
All right, I second then.
A second from Rich. Roll call. Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero. Thank you, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.